2024, board members may attend and participate in board meetings by electronic means or in accordance in accordance to policy BMEA and state law. Kara, could you please call the roll?
Chavez.
Here.
Medler.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Quinlan Iweda.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Unger.
Here.
Motion passes.
Lelania, who is going to read our land acknowledgement this morning?
Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and justly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and forty-eight other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the history of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people, and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
Thank you, Lelania. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, is there a motion to approve our agenda? Move by Kitty, second by Jason. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Chavez.
Yes.
Medler.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Quinlan Iweda.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Unger.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We will now begin the work session, portion of today's meeting. Today, we'll be studying one specific topic, which is the strategic plan and UIP and associated metrics.
Good morning, everybody! Well, to celebrate our first nine AM board work session, thought it would be good to kind of wake everybody up. So excited to be here today with you all. I'll start with some introductions from folks on our team and then talk to you all about our best hopes for today and just start to jump right in. We've got, we have three hours scheduled. There's a lot of content to go through, a lot of decisions for us as a governance team to make, a lot of guidance, a lot of direction. I think our staff has done a really good job of getting us to a point that then we need to take as a governance team and kind of figure out where we're going. And so today, obviously, you all know Laura. She's our deputy superintendent. Joining us this morning is Chris Brecht, our director of strategic initiatives. And you may have not met Chris before. Chris has been with our team for multiple years and has been instrumental for our academics team to, he aligns the project management, makes sure that all of the pieces are working together so that there's coherence within our system. You all know Jonathan, our executive director for assessment and program evaluation. And Claire is our senior data visualization designer. And in her role, she has been tasked with really starting to dream about what could a set of metrics look like that, A, you know, create the transparency within our community that I know that is important to all of us, also to help to drive outcomes. And just think about, you know, the, you know, what data do we have available? How do we visualize it? To what extent, what granularity do we need to get to drive improvement? And so Claire will be presenting later on this morning. And so those are the folks on the team. And Kara Phillips, you all know Kara. Kara is here for Laura, who is on vacation, a well-deserved vacation, I might add, and works in the superintendent's office. So we have, I think that we've got some big goals for today. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we get this format right. We want it to be conversational. We want it to be, for these day-long work sessions, feel different than a typical board meeting. I would say that in our presentation, we've been really mindful about preparing content, but also preparing for the conversation that will go around some of that content. And so, you know, as we, as we check in after today and during today, make notes, board members of what worked, what didn't work. These are things that we want to adjust. I think that, you know, in our prioritization, it was a priority for all of us to create these different type of working environments for our board. And so I want to make sure that we get that right. You know, we're going to talk about this through line between strategic plan evaluation, as you all know, that was conducted last year, the DAC recommendations, which again, I think that we've all really recognized as thoughtful and meaningful and important, and then UIP development. And then thinking about that through line as how do you take all of that information and boil it down into areas that you can communicate, that you can train to, and you can hold yourself accountable to. We'll talk, we'll talk a little bit about the data that we need, what we have, and what we need to go try to get in sense of making sure that we are on track for improvement. And again, we'll talk about that in terms of availability, granularity, frequency. And I think that all of those things, I think that we've prepared information that we can talk about that. And then we'll just do a walkthrough of some of the data types and some of the samples of what's possible with our data and our visualizations and work you through that. And so, a couple of things, I have a couple of assignments today. We're going to need a timekeeper because even though we have three hours, I do worry that, that, you know, the conversations will be rich and deep, and I don't want to, I don't want to compromise that, but that means that we're going to have to move along. So, okay, Beth, there you go, timekeeper. Okay, so just make, just mindful that we're trying to end at noon. I'm guessing we'd want to have a break somewhere in between, depending upon where we are. I don't know where that break is going to be. Again, this is less of a scripted and planned and more of a conversation. And I would say that, you know, given what we've shared today, what our goals are for today, would love to hear reactions from board members. It can be a thumbs up. It could be a sideways thumb. It could be a thumbs down. Are we on point? What else, what else was it that you would hope to try to accomplish today? And so just some feedback before we get going, so know if we're making, we're hitting the mark or not. So if I can do just a quick, one of my teacher tricks, right, if you're, if it sounds good, thumbs up. You got some questions, thumbs sideways. Sounds like I really messed up, thumbs down. Okay. Oh, okay. I thought you were just messing with me. Okay. All right. So, that being said, Chris, next slide. Off to a strong start. So, Chris has got it. It's, that's, it's the clicker's fault, for sure. Not his. All right. So there's four big, I think we can break the conversation up into four big buckets for information that we would share. I do think that for context, you know, as we're, we're talking about changing the way that we measure, changing the ways that we roll out strategy, it could, it could be beneficial for us to start with a few slides on how what we've done has moved the needle and in what areas. And so this isn't all of our successes and failures. This is only things that we would lift up as we feel like that these are very positive signals based on the work we've been doing within our strategic plan on outcomes that, many of which were aligned in our old strategic plan metrics. And so we could start with a feel-good and a celebration. I would say that we, in preparing for this meeting, there was a lot of back and forth on what's embargoed and what isn't. And so they're releasing the embargo today on much of the achievement and growth data across the state. And so where typically, I might create context to give comparisons to other districts, comparisons to state, comparisons to metro, comparisons to like districts. I don't have that data for you today, only because it hasn't been released, and that information will be released today. You'll see, you'll probably see a lot of that in our planned September rollout of the CMAS presentation of results. But if it's okay with the board, we'd love to kind of run through some of the things that we've seen, right? And again, thumbs up, thumbs down, yell at me, whatever it is that you all want to do. All right, Chris, let's, let's lean on that clicker and see how we're doing. So the first thing, when I, when I started in 2018, at the time, one of the biggest frustrations of the board was there was lots of presentations and talk of improved strategies and efforts with data that never moved. And if you were to look historically at the data, three, four years in a row, things stayed about the same regardless of improvement efforts. And so I'm really proud of this, of this fact. When you look at the number of students who meet or exceed expectations in both CMAS math and CMAS ELA, and collectively, if you were to bubble that together as a group, that the district is performing higher than it ever has. Since CMAS was rolled, and I think it's like 2014, Jonathan, is that, or 2017, is as far back as we're going.
On the, 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 that we, that we have, we can go back about that far. We get into some times where there was an algebra test you could take if you were in seventh grade, so it gets a little tricky back in.
I would say to Jonathan's credit, we're really careful not to lift up improvements that we don't feel are genuine improvements, that are anomalies and things of that nature. So, you know, we, we have to be kind of mindful of that. But that, to me, more kids at or above benchmark, that's a sign that things are heading in the right direction. And with our growth, I think that as you, as you'll see growth, and we don't have the growth as prepared for you all today, some of this is replicated from what we did at our first DLT. But high growth, well-stable or increased growth, inclusive of students of color and free, reduced lunch eligible. So we're seeing, you know, again, I don't, I can't compare our subgroup growth to the subgroup growth across the state, only because that data's been embargoed. We can only look at what we have, but we're very happy with our growth, and it's leading to increased achievement. And so I think that that's something that we certainly want to celebrate. One of the things that it was a real important piece of our metrics, our UIP discussions during our last UIP and our strategic plan, was this idea of disproportionate discipline. Now, I will say that our discipline is still disproportionate, but the thing to celebrate is that we've reduced suspension, out-of-school suspensions for Hispanic Latino students by fifty-one percent since we started our Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan. And I think that that's certainly notable. Not done, still have work to do, but I think that what you would see is that we are making progress in, I think, what's an incredibly important area that is not just isolated to the idea of suspensions, but it's also, it also is connected to student achievement. Kids that are suspended, kids that are out of school, kids that are out of classrooms, can't learn. We have pretty technical views that we look at on a monthly basis internally through a meeting that we call Vortex. And we've really used this data visualization internally to really unpack what's happening. And as you could see over the past two years, you could see the significant year-over-year reductions in the number of out-of-school suspensions. Now, if you're at school at eleven thirty AM on a Wednesday, you probably have a higher likelihood of being suspended or doing something to get you suspended than any other time. And it's, but, and so that's data maybe not as actionable, like you can't like, but, but I think the monthly data is actionable for sure. When you see that there's the upticks in overtime and then during a course of the year, I would point you to twenty-two, twenty-three. And board members, you might remember this at the time, we reported out to the board of around, at our first strategic plan metrics presentation that our, we were becoming more disproportionate and the data was trending in a way that we didn't like, right? Some of you all might remember that. And then we made some interventions and changes. And so you could see that dark blue line go above and then below. And so, so this is actionable, like we can do things with this.
Quick question. Is it possible to get a copy of the, this deck? Because Kitty and I are both having problems reading it.
Do we not have copies of that for everybody? Everything attached to the agenda?
Sorry, I didn't see it. Thanks.
All right. So in any event, go ahead, Kitty, you got a question or?
I'm just looking at the bottom or Saturday and Sunday.
Well, you know, we do, sometimes if it's a trip, an out-of-school trip, sometimes if it's an athletic event, right, sometimes those things happen over the weekend. You know, we, we could share with you additional data. What we do know that we've, we've increased not only restorative practices, but the proportionality of our restorative practices. And we've increased the focus on alternatives to suspensions. And we feel that that is at the crux of, of, of these improvements. And also paying attention, minding the store, knowing that this is something that's important, tracking it, measuring it, and intervening as, as needed. As we think about the percentage of Hispanic Latino students in advanced courses, yes, oh, go back, your questions?
Sorry. Yeah, real quick, before moving on. I really appreciate this view to see kind of change over time and the way we've kind of addressed it, been responsive. And this is your monthly Vortex meetings, so you do this sort of data granularity. To what degree do you talk a little bit about the types of things that students have been centered for and kind of that variation and kind of what's getting restorative justice versus what's getting, you know, this last step?
Yeah, no, I do think that we get into that level of detail in those meetings. And I do think that there are some codes that are more subjective than others. And we've really provided, tried to provide guidance to our teams and information to our teams on that. And I think it's something that you have to continue to watch. And one of the challenging things, you know, the, the, the lay of the land on the ground is that sometimes some of those, there's multiple codes for an incident, right? There's not, sometimes an incident is, includes like a disrespect and a fighting, or sometimes there's, things are multiply coded. So, you know, that's some, that's a nuance that you have to think about and work through when you're trying to make, you know, decisions at that, at scale. And so we do have those conversations internally. I do think that it's something that we'll have to continue to pay attention to and dial in on. And so, yes, that's a great, that's a great question. Lelania.
Do we track reports to law enforcement?
Yes, we do. We do. And we track arrests, reports to law enforcement. You know, before we started with our new safety and security plan with our school safety advocates, like a hundred, I think a hundred forty referrals to law enforcement, I think last year, maybe a dozen. So we've all but eliminated, we have all but eliminated unnecessary reports to law enforcement. Now, I will say this, right, there are things that we need to report, by law, you have to report, and we should. And there are things where you should be suspended and you should be expelled, right? There are certain standards for behavior in our system, and that does not, in no way comes in tension with, like, we're using restorative practices and alternative suspensions in ways that are responsible, allow kids to learn from their mistakes in a way that allows them to continue to access their education. But we're not saying you can't suspend kids, you can't expel kids, you can't arrest kids. Like that, those, I'm really clear in Vortex, in those meetings, you have to have a level of order and expectation for behavior. But there's also, when we get out of our own mindsets on what has to happen for what, and we try to be more inclusive and restorative, there's better solutions that we've been able to roll out at scale in the district. Hispanic Latino students in advanced courses, you know, this is, we're slowly ticking up, you know, between, and if you notice in the pandemic, if you notice in these graphs, I probably should have put like a little break mark between the slides, it goes seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, but nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one are removed because the data sets were COVID-impacted. But, you know, again, three years steady increase in making sure students get access to advanced courses, both in elementary school, middle school, and high school. And so that's, I think, a point of pride. Again, a metric in our, in our former strategic plan, something that we've been focused on. When we look at it from, in regards to disproportionality, getting better, not there, right, but improvements. And this past year, I mean, we're, we are, we are very close to being proportionate in our leaders of color compared to the demographics of our school district. I would say that this is a point of pride and a point of frustration is that our teachers of color, that percentage has not budged. So percentage has not budged. Good news is we've been working hand-in-hand with BVEA. I believe we have an MOU to kind of think about some of our change, adjusting some of our hiring practices to see if we can begin to budge this. But of all of the data that we have in the school system, you know, I regret to inform you that that is a piece of data that our strategies, our initiatives, our expectations have not budged it. And it's something that we need to continue to work on and focus on. I think there's a lot of elements that can, that, that play into that. Either way, it's something that we know is important. Research is incredibly clear on the benefits of that, especially for our students of color. And it's something that we're not letting go of that we'll continue to focus on. Go ahead and start clicking. And I would say that, and for those of you that attended graduation ceremonies where the, where the, where the principal recognized students who earned one of these, 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 these honors, these criteria, you'll, you'll know that almost eighty-three percent of students are graduating with something more than a high school diploma. And as we get into some of the data looks that Claire has later on, where you can see some of the granularity of that, you'll get to see that, you know, the, the ramp up and what this looks like year over year. So incredibly, incredibly proud of this, this data point for us. And just, it's, it's really neat when I think that, you know, you see a core initiative in a strategic plan, and this is one of our core initiatives around post-workforce readiness. And then you can see initiative to resource, to direction, expectation to implementation. And you can see something that's really impacting kids directly. So again, point of pride for our team. And for those of you that had a chance to see that in graduations, was really kind of neat to see that visualized. And, and, you know, just changing what is post, you know, it's not just college, right? There's, there's other things you can do, and everybody should be prepared. Kitty?
So the numbers in the squares don't add up to eighty-three percent of our population, right?
It's graduate, it's seniors.
Gradu-, oh, of course, duh. Thank you.
That's okay. How many seniors do we have? Sorry. Like twenty-three hundred, twenty-four? We can get to that number specifically. Yeah. Seventeen percent more than the number we have there, Alex. How does that, how does that work? Okay. So then, what, this is, is this new, right? So as we talk about granularity and lifting up successes at the school level, you know, I think that this is something that's come up in conversations around, you know, how do we learn from folks that are growing faster than other, other schools? How do we learn from schools that are stuck and not making the progress? How do you establish outlier criteria to be able to look at and learn? And, you know, I'll, I'll lift up some schools here that over the net past three years have, have increased the number of students at grade level by five percent, right? So you think about a little more than one and a half percentage point increases per year. And this is something that I do for our leaders to lift up, you know, what is transformative work in buildings, right? Now, what, what, what schools are doing is, is something that you have to dig into a little bit deeper. Like, I think that, you know, it can be leadership, it can be buy-in, it can be clarity, it could be resource. There are a lot of reasons why folks start to do things that allow them to improve. But I do think that it's interesting to see, you know, some of these schools that have, that have, that improved. And I think the thing that's most interesting for me is that we have high support schools, targeted schools, and flexible schools. Remember, we've created this criteria based on past performance. And when you have a Douglas next to a Cole and Pioneer next to a BCSIS, next to an Eisenhower, it tells me that the conditions that we've created in our school district allow everyone to get better, right? Like, for me, right? Like, we talked about what's in the superintendent's purview and control, creating those conditions for people to be successful, right? So they're not fighting against the system, that the system is lifting them up. That's what I take away from this graph in ELA. And Chris, if you want to kind of keep going forward, and in math, it's even more impressive. Now, if you were to look at statewide improvements in math, that, that this is more on trend, I would say than, that in, from what I understand, the trends will be in regards to just the statewide improvement. But again, I mean, you've got similar schools, some of them with leaders that have been in the school for fifteen years, some of them that are new leaders. I just think that it speaks to what we learned in the evaluation, which is keep doing the things you're doing, right? Be a little bit more intentional, be a little bit more focused. And we'll talk through that a little bit when we talk about our through line. But I just think that this is interesting for elementary schools. For middle schools, again, in, in ELA, I think that, you know, maybe not as big of a, of a, as of a concentration, but, but more improvements over year, over three years. And then go to math. And this is exciting for me because middle school math was probably when you looked at our district-wide data for a number of years. It was the area that we were really struggling to kind of figure out, how do you improve? Some of the things that we did with previous boards' leadership and, and direction was we accelerated the, the adoption of new middle school math materials. And we adopted those and implemented those last year. I would anticipate that the full impact of that happens two, three years after you've, you've adopted something. And oftentimes, you see when you opt to adopt a new curriculum, then implementation dip, and then, and then improvements. But we've got our finger on the things that we want to improve. We did something different, and things are getting better, right? Those, I think, are all positive trends and things to learn from as we think about setting metrics and really establishing where we're going over the next five years.
One thing I think is really fascinating about that particular chart is how drastic those rises were between twenty-three and twenty-four, and whether that was a curriculum adoption, being more aligned to standards, standards-based instruction, instructional practices, or whether the, the new content was aligned more to the state test. But it is remarkable between twenty-three and twenty-four, how that really accelerated. So it's exciting to see that what you're doing is really working when it is implemented with fidelity.
When you remove the burden from teachers and schools on trying to figure out what they need to do to get better, and you hone it in, and you resource it, and you train to it, right? There's still implementation bumps, right? Change management is a tricky thing. If you've been doing something for twenty-five years, and the twenty-sixth year somebody says, hey, do it differently, I don't care what context, it's hard to sort through and sort out, right? So, but, you know, this burden of every school's got to figure it out on your own, right? Every teacher's got to plan, you know, a gazillion hours a week to figure that, these things out individually, right? It's finding the balance between autonomy and clarity and expectations. And I think that that is what we'll continue to hone over time. So thanks for that, Nicole, but I just, I think a good learning for us. High schools, if you were to compare our achievement at high schools against not only the Denver metro, but like districts across the country, you'd find that our high schools, as, as a whole, are going to score in the measures on the state accountability system incredibly high. Number one, number two, depending upon the groups that you'd compare them to. And so, so as you, as you see about, you know, you're not going to see the bigger, I, you're not going to see as big of improvements over time, but you'll see continuously high performance in those areas. And then, yes, Kitty? EBRW. Go ahead, Jonathan.
It's, it's evidence-based reading and writing, which is what the college board has called. It's called the, the content area over time. I think they're going to reading and writing now, so.
And then, next slide. And I would say that, you know, I'd want for consistency's sakes for you to see, you know, who's made big gains even though there's high achievement. And I'd really love to work up the work of, lift up the work of Centaurus High School. Looking at you, Dan. Yeah. But, 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 you know, again, clarity and expectations, you know, great teachers doing the right stuff, really buying into the vision of a leader who was really focused on improvement and equity. And, and I would say that just as a nuance, Arapaho Ridge, they have smaller end sizes, right? So just know that that is a, you know, every one or two kids could be a percentage point. And so, and, but we're going to get into that when we look at the views. You'll see how end sizes and subgroups and how all those things connect as we think about what are the things that we want to lift up. So, that's the success, success category. Happy to open it up for any questions, thoughts, ideas. Is that helpful? Is that not helpful as we think about moving forward with our conversation today? Helpful, thumbs up. Want to talk about it sideways, thumbs down if you want me to leave? Okay. All right. So, we didn't, we, we on purpose didn't like schedule out like seventy slides. So we didn't, we, we on purpose didn't like schedule out like 70 slides where we talk to you and ask you to react to what we think. Right? Like we, like, like so, so we've, we've broken this up in a way, so it's more conversational, a little bit of voice and choice, you know, putting my teacher hat on for our board. I, I think that there is a rhythm of, of how we should have this conversation, but didn't want to, wanted to make sure that we had buy-in before we move forward to that and know that there's some flexibility. So think of this as your Jeopardy! board, like these are the categories. We can talk about how we think DAC and strategic plan review and UIP potential focus areas align. Then we can talk about what data we have and how granular we can get today and get feedback on whether that works or not. And then we can talk about looks of metrics. Like we haven't cooked up the dashboards for the metrics. We've cooked up ideas and thoughts with the idea that once Claire and Jonathan, they build these things, then they update, right? Like so the work, you put the work in upfront, right? So you want to get, you'll never have all the information you want, you want. You'll always have some questions as you dive deeper, but you'd want, you want a set of metrics that you can look at to see if things are going forward. So we can go alignment, data reporting, metrics? If that's okay with folks, unless somebody has a strong opinion, otherwise. How are we doing, Timekeeper?
Thirty minutes in.
Thirty, thirty, thirty-three minutes in. Okay. All right. Everybody okay? Anybody need a break? Okay. All right, Chris. So our team has been hard at work trying to do a lot of sense-making around the information we have, the, the recommendations from Shelley, how that will align to the DAC recommendations and how that can inform a UIP. Kitty?
Are you talking about not the current DAC recommendations, but the ones that preceded the period of time we're talking about?
I'm talking about the DAC recommendations that came to you in the spring. Remember, Chris and Ally?
Yeah.
Chris and Ally came, right? And again, I, I shared this with DAC and I, and I want to thank them again publicly for being so dialed in and in tune to how we could, how we can potentially get better, right? Now, as you align and you, you know, we have a crosswalk that we've provided to you in your handout that kind of talks a little bit about this in depth. And I believe in your handout, you should have the DAC recommendations. They're here, right? So you can see kind of how that works. And Laura, did you want to kind of take over and kind of go through this and, and kind of just, you know, talk from, from where you're at?
Yep.
And, and then we'll have a conversation.
And so Chris and I will actually be walking through the next set of slides. We want to share with you areas where we see strong alignment, as Dr. Anderson said, between some of our proposed next steps with the strategic plan as connected to the UIP, the developing UIP, the DAC recommendations from spring, as well as the strategic plan recommendations, which you also have a copy of in your packet. We really want to be as coherent and as streamlined as possible for our staff and for that balance, as Dr. Anderson said, between autonomy and clarity of expectations. And for our community as well. We want to be clear for all of the BVSD community. So we want to take a look with you at some ways in which we've aligned the strategies and the focus of the strategic plan, the UIP, which is in development, while keeping, as I said, those DAC recommendations and strategic plan recommendations in mind. A little bit about the work we did to get here, per the DAC recommendations to align all of these, our team spent time cross-referencing those recommendations and cross-reference with our data trends, taking a look at the first five years of the strategic plan outcomes, and looking at where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. And that, that really created that crosswalk that you have a copy of. The development of the UIP strategies have come from both the intention to align and also enhance the work that's underway. So addition, in addition to this team rolling up their sleeves and working hard on that alignment, we've gotten input from certainly Dr. Anderson, myself, our school leaders and the executive team, and we're looking forward to getting input from the board as well. With that, I'm going to let Chris begin talking about the areas where we see strong alignment.
Good morning, board members. Thank you for having me. So as Dr. De La Cruz said, we wanted to really structure this in a way that we could see a clear through line from those recommendations, as well as the evaluation that we received from Dr. Shelley Billig in the spring that you all had a chance to review as well. So this first category is through the recommendation of focus, this continued focus on prioritized standards. So really that all students are experiencing grade-level, standards-based instruction. And obviously, we know that there's high-leverage strategies and included in with that are professional learning for both our teachers and our leaders, the ongoing implementation of data-driven instruction to know where students are and their mastery of the standards. And then supporting our leaders with focused observation and feedback to grow educator practice in this area. We also see really strong alignment in, in the recommendations from DAC. So through recommendation one, data priority two, facilitate deeper equity analysis and action. Shift one, culturally competent, sustaining teaching and leading in every classroom. And then shift three as well, embrace universal access. And shift four, champion inclusion and reject the soft bigotry of low expectations. So we see really strong alignment within this category and we're really excited to continue in with that work and the implementation of that work.
Pause for reaction or thumbs up? Makes sense? Sideways? Talk about it? Thumbs down? Okay.
Can I say, way back when I was in the District Accountability Committee, we were asking for this really clear alignment between the strategic plan, the UIP, and the practices. And it is great to really see the intent there and the, really aligning them for what feels like the first time. Or maybe it's just articulating it very clearly for the first time that there's a high degree alignment. So everything that we're doing is really focused on the same goals.
I would say we haven't always been great at this, right? I would say that this is a vast improvement and, you know, and I've worked with Nicole and I've worked with Jorge, now working with Chris and really embracing this idea of the District Accountability Committee is a critical thought partner to help us improve. And, and to build and, and to, and to maintain that relationship, data transparency, data clarity, clear expectations, and then consistency across the board. So as school advisory councils go to their school and principal and think about what they learned in district accountability, district advisory council, or school accountability councils, that there's alignment. So when they see something at the district, they can expect to see some of those things at the school. Because that can, with, with tons of autonomy, that can get really confusing. Think about this, you're the SAC chair, you come back from the DAC meeting, hey, this is what district's doing. Yeah, but we're not doing that. We're doing A, B, C, D, and E. Well, why are you doing that? Well, fill in the reason, right? So I appreciate that. Alex?
On the front line, again, I think this is, as a reason, this is on a top, on the, on the list, I think, in terms of making change in instruction and the practice. One of the things I'm interested is directly to that point, which is having a good sense of, you know, how many functional SACs do we have? And having the metric of that so that we know that there is actually that, that step in the process exists in some of the places. And I think sometimes it's an issue of scale and history, and sometimes it's an issue of school culture not being into it. So like I would dive deeper into that, like where, where do we not have a SAC? And how can we help that happen?
Yep, agreed. And I think the answer to that's all of the above, right? Like I think there are times when, you know, ultimately comes down to superintendent's responsibility to set the conditions and expectations around this being something that needs to happen, right? And then sometimes there are leaders who have, who either haven't put in the work or struggle to get people to participate. And then there are some leaders who have discouraged people to participate over time. I mean, if we're being completely honest. And, and so I think that what, what we've done in working with Chris, and I know they've done a survey and I haven't seen the results on, do you have a SAC? Why or why not? And the other work that we've done in this is we started the way to differentiated funding that we said, if you don't have a SAC, you don't get any money. So that worked to get SACs. But are they functioning? Are they operating? Is it, are they working like the district and DAC are working hand-in-hand? Is that replicated locally? I think that that's the question to ponder. Okay. Sorry, if, Timekeeper, you gotta like, if we, if we, we have a lot to do, so. I'm sorry if, if I'm going on, but tell me if I am and I'll stop talking. Okay.
So in keeping with that alignment of strategic plan to DAC recommendations to UIP, we looked carefully at our data patterns and established with conversation, not only with this team, also Dr. Anderson, executive team, and our school leaders, the, the root cause or the core issue being that some students are receiving inconsistent access to grade-level standards and differentiated instruction from the adults in our system who have limit, have had limited training in culturally responsive pedagogy and practices. And the performance priority we're wanting to tackle is the disproportionate academic achievement and growth for what's currently named as historically marginalized student groups, which will likely evolve based on input from our community to naming specific student groups. Black students, Hispanic, Latinx students, students who are experiencing poverty. And, and so there is an alignment to our data as well as an extension of root cause and student performance priority from past UIP. However, this is an evolution, which you're going to see in each of the UIP strategies that we share. And this may be a moment to stop for conversation.
Jason? I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay.
I just have a question. I don't know if it's possible. How broad is that inconsistency? If we're, if we're talking about inconsistency with access to standards and instruction, how could you characterize that? I mean, are we talking about some classes that really have no, you know, like there's very little evidence of that happening? Or is it a narrow, we just need to narrow it further?
I think it depends. It's, that's the right question and a tricky question, right? Now, if you were to look just solely on results, I mean, you've seen how many schools are improving in reading and math. I think that it's, it's really, it comes down to the consistent expectations, which are newer, right? Newer, right? Like we, after, during pandemic, we rolled out something we called Atlas, which was our first attempt that I know of in the district to begin to start to align practices. And we took a lot of feedback on Atlas. Atlas evolved into the instructional playbook. And I would say that where we have seen probably the best alignment is where schools are really embracing data-driven instruction, because it's, it's a practice that forces you to be aligned. It brings people together, right? And again, and, and I think it's a more effective practice than what others might do, which is a very heavy-handed, top-down approach, which is on day four, you're going to be teaching this lesson, we're going to come around, check the box, whether you're teaching it or not. And I don't know that with the high quality of teachers that we have, I, I think that that would create chaos within our culture that would prevent any movement from happening. So I think that as we talk about strategic plan implementation measures, like we've got to quantify that. And we've got some ideas on how you can do that, and whether that's, you know, high-level bubble-ups of things we observe in classrooms, high-level bubble-ups of the artifacts of evidence of the levels of thinking and, and access to grade-level standards across, across classrooms. And so we will talk a little bit about some ideas on that. But to be able to tell you, 78% of our classes that we went into were a lot, like we, we aren't there yet. So I hope, hopefully that answers your question. Go ahead. I would just put this in, if there's a parking lot, I'd like to put in a parking lot. Do we have such a thing? I'm really excited and think we're going in the right direction. And I really appreciate your insight into the data-driven instruction being the thing we can get such expert teachers behind and involved in. I guess one of the things I'd love to see in the, like the budget presentations throughout the year is the link to how we're supporting that happening. Like I have two different neighbors who are ex-teachers who this year are basically data coaches, right? And so I'd love to be able to track back through the budget where we're carving out the money for the FTE for like the facilitation of that. So we can see that it's actually a substantive priority in the budget and that if like, if it's the thing that has big change, then we need to prioritize that in the budget and the HR sort of decision-making. So that's just one thing for the parking lot. Yep, I think that's a great parking lot and great feedback and something that's, that's incredibly doable, right? Like you can, you, well, you can quantify the FTEs that we have driving that, and then we have to quantify the level of adoption and implementation. And then, and that's the thing we have to kind of think through.
I share your excitement around this. It's a small thing from the presentation that I wanted to kind of put a plug in for. Laura, you were describing historically marginalized students, and I just want to make sure we're also including when we drill down on our data, students with disabilities, students GT identified, and emerging bilingual students. I'm sure we're going to do that, but probably goes without saying. But just, that's really important to me that we have that data in our presentations.
Here's the great news. We're going to have so much data here in like 20 minutes that we could look at, and we can decide on, you know, how we look, how we report out, how we measure success. Any way you'd want to slice it, right? As long as, as we can enter that into a data set, we can slice it and visualize it, and so.
Yeah. How many schools are using DDI?
Well, it's, it's, let me, let me answer that. Like we have a certain set of schools, our UVA schools, right? Let's think about it this way. If you have, there's different levels in which things are implemented. In some places, they're culturally embedded, right? So for example, we were doing our Alicia Sanchez interviews, right? A member, again, one of the lowest performing schools in Colorado five years ago. And when we talked to the staff about what do you need in a leader, what did they say to us? Well, here we do DDI. That's part of who we are, right? And that's one level of implementation, right? Like that's the ideal. You have some that are on the path there. I would tell you another place where it's culturally embedded is Cole Elementary School, right? Where when we go, and Jorge was, had a chance to go with us last year in our roundtables, right? All we heard about is how that's changed everything for them. So I think that it's, it's not who's doing it and who isn't. I think you could say most people are doing it in some way, shape, or form. Have they gotten to the place where it's not leader-dependent or accountability-dependent and it happens when nobody's looking, right? And that is when you, you've arrived. And those schools are the schools that continuously outperform and I would suggest are outliers within the state of Colorado for the kids they serve and the performance that they're getting.
So follow-up on that. So for the schools that have been doing it but are not UVA schools, do they have DDI personnel like the UVA schools do?
Depends. Some people have an instructional coach who leads the DDI work. Other people have somebody who's dedicated to that task and don't have other responsibilities. And I mean, and I think that there's a little variability in how this works at schools. But I'll, I'll let Laura speak to it. That's my understanding.
And many schools have brought on data leads or DDI coaches with differentiated funding. We're also with our strategic support teams, providing additional data, DDI leads, and then we have district DDI leads and coaches. And so there really is a, a variety of ways that schools have support for, either completely embedded or supported by district for conducting and implementing DDI. We do have expectations within our consistent expectations across all schools for DDI implementation. As Dr. Anderson said, those are at varying levels of implementation, and we're supporting an evolution from wherever the school is to its next step. And, and we also have instituted training at the district for our DDI leads, so that we have built consistency in their practices and, and really built up their toolboxes so that the work that they're doing in schools is fortified with evidence-based practices.
So this gets to my follow-up question to that. So there isn't one single process for getting every school there. It sounds like we're working with each school where it is to move them towards fully embracing DDI. And how is that working?
I, I think it's working well. And, and as we talk about change management and leadership, right? Like I think that this is the way we've been talking about at the team. Like it's, it's a lot easier to diagnose the problems and issues and come up with the solutions than it is to actually implement the right solution. Like those are two different things, right? You could identify the problems, right? We've clearly identified, you do that through some root cause analysis. You can identify solutions through research base and what works. And then the, the art and science of change management is reliant upon who's in the building, how do you bring them along, what do they need? And I think that that can be nuanced. Expectations can be clear, but right, how long it takes to get you from where you, where you are to where you need to be is, I think, something that we have, we have to monitor. And I do think that school districts get this wrong all of the time. They say, well, this is the right thing to do, everybody do this now, with not enough conversation, not enough input, not enough time, not enough trust. training, not enough resource, right? So I think that, as Laura and I, over the past three years, and Chris and everybody involved, have thought about, what's the pace and cadence of change that will get us to where we want to be, so that once we get there, if, it's there, right? You don't have to redo it. And, you know, that's why I say this is cultural embedded. So it's difficult. I think that I'm very mindful that it's going to take some places longer than others, and I don't have necessarily a, like, a, this is what these schools will always look like, and this is why it'll take them longer. I think that there's a lot of things to leadership, and it could take, it just depends. But I will say, the great news, and you heard Laura speak to this, is we have the district conditions, right? So as folks become ready and as we bring people on board, that the conditions are there to support folks being successful.
Hey, since I'm timekeeping, I'm going to jump in here real quick. I want to point out that we have kind of three more sections before I say a natural break. Don't want to slow the conversation, but just want to pace us appropriately. That would get us at a break maybe about by 10:15. Just a heads up.
And again, maybe this goes in the parking lot, given the time, but one of the things I saw in Shelley's evaluation of the strategic plan was feedback on the state of our assessment system as a district. And so, totally agree with the prioritization of MTSS and DDI, but it seems like one of the things we could do at the sort of governance level is support the movement in, towards a more modern, you know, more comprehensive and unified assessment system. Where are we in that? And could we turn that into a metric as well, just to the sense that that's coherent? Because that seems like, that's a thing culturally in the district that is an obstacle to the implementation of this. It has been an Achilles' heel. If you were to compare where our systems are versus where peer systems are, right? What you would see is most peer systems by 2010 had set up very comprehensive formative assessment systems that had interim-based assessments. And I would say that we've made a lot of progress there. I think, you know, if you don't have clarity and expectations for your system around curriculum and instructional practices, it's hard to have, to roll out assessments, and then, like, they go hand-in-hand, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. They go hand-in-hand. So I would say that, you know, we've made progress there. We could speak to it. I would say that there's one area that we are probably maybe a year out from being where, exactly where we'd want to be, and that's elementary school math. Because what we're trying to do in our assessments is align them to the curriculum that we're adopting, and we're in the, this year, we're going to be adopting elementary school math curriculum. But we do have IXL, we have I Ready, and those are skills-based, not necessarily measuring the standards, although they're aligned to standards, but not as tightly as maybe some of our others are. We implemented Common Lit. Maybe you've heard about that. We have Inti Math in middle school, high school, probably high school's the last one we get to. So, in any event, yes, and I do think that that's something we could talk about. And I'll let you talk, and then I'll let Laura, who's waiting, press the button to talk a little bit about this. I don't know.
Sorry, I'll just, my feedback on that would be that if, as we add, I totally believe in creating the instructional playbook and the clarity and, you know, systematizing this. But if we end up having the assessment driven by each curriculum decision that we made, then we're sort of undercutting the systematic nature of it. And so if we have eight assessments based on eight different levels of curriculum, then we're losing sort of the systematic advantage of a more interim assessment system.
It's tricky, right? I hear what you're saying. And, you know, if we want to know kids are getting the standards and depth of standards in the curriculum that we have, like, is that more valuable, or is it more valuable to have something that's aligned to the state's standards at a high level, year over year, grade over grade? Or can you do both? I think those are the things that we'll have to contemplate. Okay. Turning it back over to Laura and Chris.
So maybe the most prominent recommendation we heard from Shelley was the supportive implementation around MTSS. So we often say the MTSS is the way we operate, meaning we use team-driven, shared leadership to identify the right supports for students at the right times. And really, the nuance of this is how we go about supporting a high-quality implementation around this. And so, of course, data-driven instruction also falls within MTSS, and it falls within tier-one instruction, how we support, you know, students in mastering those standards. So, in thinking about how this aligns on those potential implementation strategies, it's applied specifically to academic intervention. You'll notice that MTSS goes across multiple areas of focus for us, but then calling out specifically how it is applied to academic intervention and that ongoing support of data-driven instruction. And then in terms of alignment to DAC recommendations, again, data priority two, recommendation two, shift three, and four, there's a specific thing that DAC called out as an identified root cause hypothesis of gaps in tier-two support prevents students, support, prevents students, especially young people of color and children from low-income families, from assessing needed interventions before special education is referred. So we feel like there's even direct alignment with that hypothesis in terms of what that causes. So we're really excited to be able to address that.
When it comes, and this is not for today, but later, when we dial into the UIP, we've been talking about improved fidelity to MTSS for as long as I have been involved in the district, and we're continuing to talk about it. So I'd be curious when, later, when we see the UIP and some of those details about clarity on the root cause, what are we going to do differently this time around that we haven't tried before, so we can really make some progress. So that's just one earmark I would like to make on that, because we do talk a lot about improving MTSS structures, and we continue to struggle to move the needle there.
It's probably the hardest thing for teachers to do, right? When you think about differentiating instruction, especially on, especially at tier-two, and just like to get out of the educationese, think about tier-one is, I'm the teacher, I teach the entire class, right? After I teach the entire class, some kids don't get it. That's tier-two. And then after I do some other interventions, some kids still don't get it and consistently don't get it. And then that could potentially be tier-three, after you've given them interventions over time. So, you know, I would say that the promising practices that I think we have evidence that are being implemented is data-driven instruction, because when you have data-driven instruction, then you're looking at the data, and it quantifies the kids that aren't getting that tier-one instruction, right? I mean, and to Alex's point, you identify those through not just how their grades, but also through, you know, these formative assessments that you use, right? And then through the tier-two, like, I think that the place where this can fail in classrooms and in school districts is when you go from tier-one to tier-three with no intervention. That's how MTSS is different than, oh, you're not learning, you need to get tested for special education. Oh, you're not learning, you must not understand the language. Oh, you're not learning, you know, as opposed to what, sometimes you need a second cut of instruction. So I do, I do think we have some strategies. I do think that I don't want to minimize the challenge of MTSS, especially in classrooms where you have large percentage of students who need tier-two intervention. It gets, it can get complicated. I don't, I just, in my experience over the years, I think that, I've watched leaders, superintendents, others, say, well, just differentiate, like, it's some easy magic wand that you do, and it is the hardest thing to do, I would argue, as a teacher. So, but I do appreciate that point. But you can't do MTSS if you don't have expectations around instruction, and you don't have a data system, you don't have the assessments lined up, like, so, but it is, it is complicated.
Thanks for discussing that complex, because I think it's really important, especially as we think about differentiation. And as you think about disproportionate identification here, really bringing in the cultural competence piece, that it's going to look different for different types of students, and to Bat's point earlier about emerging bilinguals being a particular group that's vulnerable here and might be falling through the cracks. And so thinking about how we can link up the cultural competence, professional development part of it, the DDI instruction, and the differentiation part of it, I think is critical, especially because I know the recommendation was, we need to target, right? In terms of where we want to make a difference and not have these kind of general approaches.
I'm, again, fully on board with the prioritization of this and the impact it has. I would draw another connection, too, to our long-range enrollment patterns, because I do believe that a bunch of the, and I look forward to more data to explore this hypothesis, but I believe a bunch of the students and families we're losing are those that are in need of greater differentiated instruction and tier-two kind of services. Or in schools where our tier-one is failing to deal with a large proportion of the kids that are atypical. So I think I would bring the metrics on the MTSS into the long-range enrollment pattern discussions and try to marry the two a little bit more, so that people understand which students leave, and that there's not just a consequence that we can't instruct them, it's that we won't even keep them if we're not figuring out how better to differentiate. And MTSS is the way to invest in the system to help support them. Well, if you all like this presentation, you'll love our declining enrollment presentation that we were queuing up in a month. Similar feel, similar type of deep dive. What are the hard questions? What are the things we need to answer? How granular do you get? How do you make data available that hasn't been in the past? All those types of things, so.
And so, we absolutely agree with the need for cultural competency to be built into our tier-one universal administration of standards-based instruction, and as well as ensuring that our students are receiving that high-quality tier-one instruction, which led us to really examine the root cause. So the root cause of our past UIP had been identified as inconsistent use of student-level data and to inform instructional planning and inadequate variety of interventions. And that's work that we've done. We have resourced those better. We've built those data-driven instruction systems over the years, where we really know that we need to go next, and a deeper analysis of the root cause is knowing that we have an inconsistent application of MTSS structures in each school, especially with regard to tier-one instruction, and to an extent, monitoring of interventions. And so, everything that the board has mentioned, as well as what Dr. Anderson spoke to, the tier-one, the tier-two, and also the MTSS system. So we have systems built, and we really are in that change management process to ensure application and consistency across all schools. And that is really speaking to how we want to tackle the student performance priority of disproportionate identification into special education, which we continue to see as a data pattern, which we also know implicit bias is a part of. And all of that lends itself to identification of this as a student priority that we want to tackle.
One of the things that this brings up for me in reviewing the materials today was, I'm kind of curious about how much collaboration time staff have in order to really successfully implement MTSS. To the question around disproportionate identification of students of special education, I think about how the most successful teams are teams that have intentional, dedicated collaboration time, planned time, to really review data, utilize our data-driven instruction opportunities, to really have MTSS implemented with fidelity across our schools. So I'd be a little curious, hard question to answer, but I'd be a little curious about where do we have teams that are having the opportunity to collaborate and do these deep data dives in order to really move the needle on disproportionate identification for students of special needs, if that makes sense?
Yes. I completely understand where you're coming from. We know the number-one need for educators is time to do the work that they need to do to serve our students well. And so as we've evolved even our professional learning and late-start time to continue to directly support the strategic plan intentions, we've built in more of that time, less time where teachers are in sitting and learning, per se, and more time for collaborative time with their peers for DDI, for MTSS. And then our executive directors of schools are in direct contact and support of our principals to support them in shaping, planning, and collaboration time that is very intentional and gives teachers the time they need to do the work that they need to do. We definitely heard through teacher advisory council, through feedback on professional learning, that teachers need more time. And so we've built more intentional time, starting last spring, but definitely throughout this year, too. And we hope just to continue to expand those opportunities, because we know to do meaningful work, we need to give time to do that.
And we have to shift time, right? There's, time is a limited, it's just a limited resource, right? So to the extent that we're able to provide a better instructional playbook, research-based interventions, make data collecting and record-keeping easier, then you free up the time to collaborate. And then just one other comment around MTSS, and this isn't necessarily a BVSD statement, but what I've, just what I've seen throughout my career. When we start looking as tier-two, as not a path to get them to tier-three, but to get them back to tier-one, then we'll override, we will have arrived. Everybody understand what I'm saying? So, like, I think MTSS has been, well, oh, we've got to go through MTSS so we can get them evaluated and get that, as opposed to tier-two should get you back to tier-one. Like, so that's the, that's the question that's just rattling around in my head.
As a part of that? I think getting parents involved in that conversation is really important in terms of the mindset of what we're trying to achieve and figuring out what's best for individual students as we kind of work through that part of it. I think that can be, kind of, communication, I think, is really important, to kind of figure out kind of where we want to go as a district and what our goals are.
I want to, I guess I would offer one friendly amendment on that. Channeling for our neurodiverse student advocates is that it's okay to be in tier-two because that's who you are, and you need that level of support and customization to you that's not trying to fix or cure you, but actually help you succeed in school. So I would just add that not everybody needs to get out of tier-two. Sometimes tier-two needs to work for everybody. And I will say that, as a, I don't want to spoil the presentation, but when we, when we think about, not spoil it, like ruin it, but like, get ahead of, like, what someone's going to say, that didn't come out right, that you can use MTSS for behavior as well. And I think a lot about of the stories that I heard two summers ago from, from teachers who do that intuitively, right? And teachers who have not built that skill set, where to the extent that you need to make accommodations for individuals so they can access instruction, Alex, to your point, you can do that around academics, but you can do that around behavior as well, and it'll be one of our things that we're talking about, where we've been calling it MTSSA, academics, and MTSSB, behavioral intervention. So just as expanding and kind of growing the ways that we're looking at things and being in responsive to the needs of our community.
So we're really excited about this next recommendation of expand and enhance career discovery. As we know, over the last couple of years, through the success of Grad Plus that Dr. Anderson shared, we've seen an improving proportionality in advanced coursework, overall increase for students accessing, accessing industry certs, work-based learning experiences, college credit, sealed by literacy. So within this focus area, we really plan to increase the exploration prior to high school. And what are those career exploration opportunities, PK through eight? And how are we identifying the right coursework and clearing those paths for students as they identify that career interest and ensuring that they have access to reach whatever dreams that they have post-graduation? So we're excited to build upon the success of what the Grad Plus has provided and knowing that we have opportunities to increase career exploration prior to high school.
And so what we're tackling here is the priority of knowing and understanding that there is still a disproportionate, yet improving, representation of students of color in work-related academic experiences, including internships, work-based learning, industry certifications, and advanced coursework. Our past UIP root cause that we were tackling and certainly have made much progress on was a lack of clear acceleration paths and systemic barriers to enrollment in accelerated coursework. That's work that we have been, our team has been very intentional in making improvements around for the last couple of years. And so, evolving that root cause and really digging into where we are now, where we want to go. We still see an inconsistent recruitment of students for advanced learning and work-based learning opportunities, and we know that we have a limited, we have some limited options in work-based learning opportunities. So this is the area for our next expansion of ensuring more proportionate access to these opportunities.
If I can, one of the other discussions I've been in over the summer is with our friends in Netherlands. And I'm really curious to know how we, as a district, can move forward to identify the obstacles that different communities have. And I think of both, like, our mountain communities on this front, and I think of our alternative education campuses and how we integrate them into this. I realize the size overall is smaller, but the obstacles are different. And so as we think about expanding this one, I'd really like us to think about geography as another level of granularity when we look at it.
I think this is the appropriate time to bring this up. I was interested in the section here about kind of the opt-in versus the opt-out with accelerated enrollment options for students. So it sounds like the whole concept around automatic enrollment in advanced courses as a, as a as a policy implementation, as a way to get more students who are historically underrepresented in our advanced programming. So, it's something I want to learn more about. I don't know what kind of, we want to talk more about, obviously, the financial implications and scheduling and all the unintended consequences of a policy change like that, but I would love to get more information about that. I think this is the appropriate time to bring that up.
So, just so I understand, what you're suggesting is that we would automatically enroll, enroll students who qualify into advanced coursework, as opposed to having a conversation and allowing the parents and kids to decide that?
I'm interested to learn more about some of the policy shifts that have happened in other states and other parts of the country around automatic enrollment for students. It's a, my understanding, and I don't know because this isn't what we need to learn more about, is that what's happening in other places is students are automatically in these advanced courses without having to be identified or qualified, and then they have the option to opt out of it, as opposed to the option to opt into it. So, it removes some of the, like, systemic barriers for students with, you know, underrepresented, historically underrepresented students to get into these programs, as opposed to, it's like a different approach to the, I'm just interested to learn more, that's all.
Yeah, I'd be interested to learn more about that as well. I do think that there, you know, I think that what's enticing about something like that is that you get the system out of the way, and then ultimately, if you do something like that, and some, I mean, it's, you know, AP for all is kind of an example of something like that where, you know, you, you know, it's this idea that college credit in high school is not for the elite, it's for the prepared, right? And then, and then some kids need additional supports with that, whether it's Avid or Adelante or whatever that might be. But then, you also have to have a safe place for kids to downshift if they feel like this isn't working for me. So, yeah, interested to learn more about that.
I had a similar question, so I appreciate that point, thinking about the gatekeeping and kind of what that looks like and what, how we expand access for opportunity for kids who want to do this and kind of facilitate that. But not just that the individual, but thinking about what's available across schools as well, to kind of Alex's point about, you know, a physical space, but just what's available at different schools and what it looks like in terms of accessibility.
So, we continue to hear from our community and our staff and through the evaluation and DAC recommendations, the importance of ensuring equity remains a focus within our strategic plan. And this objective really calls attention to the learning environments that students are walking into every day. How we're embracing restorative practices when appropriate and that schools are consistently applying the recommended resolutions for specific disciplinary events. So, how are we adhering to a consistent disciplinary framework as a district? This is also where you're going to see us expanding how we talk about MTSS in a very clear way. MTSS applied to behavior and how we're using that database decision-making in order to best support students from a behavior aspect as well as an academic aspect. So, it's, as well as professional learning around how we are supporting teachers with the practices that are critical to ensuring that students feel like they belong and that well-being be at the forefront of this focus for the next five years. This is also, in terms of recommendations from DAC, recommendation two, shift one, two, and three. We also see some real implementation strategies here. The status release, some information that we are really excited to get more into in terms of a landscape for well-being and belonging for students, identifying some high-leverage strategies that we want to talk about how we can implement here in BVSD as a part of us, working towards this initiative.
And I would just say to add a little bit of depth into that, you know, this idea of student well-being is bubbling up everywhere, right? I think that as we think about the work we're doing, right, whether it's the evaluation of what we're doing for social-emotional learning, some of the work that we're getting ready to tackle around Title IX, you know, the work that we're talking in regards to, you know, bullying and some of these other things, I think that in our community, student well-being is a, an emerging and important topic. I mean, we talk about cell phones, like, it's, it all comes around this idea of what can we do collectively with our community to take care of our kids and make sure they're well and okay so they're able to access their education? So, as we think about these through lines, we don't want to lose equity as a focus because we know that it's critical, but we also want to embrace this idea that we should be leaning into the well-being of our kids and doing the things that we need to, to make sure that we're in tune to our community, whether it's a neurodiversity policy, a cellphone policy, whether it's Title IX, whether it's evaluating what we do, to take that seriously and do that incredibly well.
And what we know is that for students to feel that they're valued, that they're included, and to enhance their well-being, they need to feel and be connected to school and that out-of-school suspensions have the opposite effect of that. So, we are keeping our eye on the root cause and the data around disciplinary procedures and who is or is not being excluded from school. When we look at our past root cause, it was all around inconsistent gathering and use of data. Thanks to Kathleen Sullivan and our Student Support Services team and Vortex meetings, our system has improved greatly in the gathering and use of data and understanding the patterns in each school. We do believe, as Dr. Anderson pointed out, though, that implicit bias still runs through our system, and it is contributing to leading to inconsistent application of criteria on students' actions and a determination around the assignment of consequences for students. And so, we want to continue to lift up our need to pay attention to the disproportionate number of students of color, students who are FRL-eligible, students with IEPs who are having one or more out-of-school suspensions, knowing that that contributes to whether or not they are experiencing well-being and belonging and feeling valued and included in schools.
How are we training on implicit bias at this point?
So, we have just hired our amazing new Director of Equity and Inclusive Teaching and Learning, who is working right now with our team to determine what trainings we're going to continue. We did have trainings throughout the last couple of years, Courageous Conversations, Glenn Singleton focused trainings. And however, Floretta, or Flo King, is building opportunities for continuous implicit bias trainings that are embedded and explicit in our PK-12 meetings throughout the year and also will be embedded and explicit in our teacher professional learning throughout the year as well.
And here's where, where I think that once, you know, let's let Flo get her feet underneath her, right? But like, once we, like, the place that I would dream and aspire to be is we look at our data results, we see teachers, right? And we look at the data, we see teachers where their discipline is disproportionate, and then we pair them with training and supports and resources, right? Like, and think, we've been explaining it, I've been explaining it to our leaders, right, around improvement. How hard is improvement when you're already doing really good or you're making improvement? How do you continue that? And we've been framing it around the Olympics, right? That, you know, that when you're really, really good, you have to train incredibly hard to get incrementally better. And so, we'll have to get more specific with our tactics, right? You start out, you do trainings, you offer trainings, you, folks opt in, then you start driving those trainings to folks that you've determined need those trainings or could benefit from those trainings. And then, ultimately, you can continue to make progress and growth. So, I'm excited that Flo has joined our team. She comes to us with a breadth of experience around addressing this very issue in higher ed. And interviewing her, she, you know, she knows what happens if we don't get it right here, what happens at colleges and universities, so amongst kids and academically. So, in any event, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I would just put a plug in for that it is, it should not be optional for anybody in our district to not be trained in this.
Absolutely agree. And that's one reason why we're building it into already required meetings and trainings and professional learning.
Just real quick, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, but by embedding it into other trainings, do you think there'll be less resistant resistance? Because I can picture some teachers who would say, "I'm not racist, I'm not biased, I don't need this training." But if it's embedded, so I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that, because I think it's great.
I think you're right, there's a whole spectrum of self-perception around a need for learning more about our own biases, which every human does have biases, we're born with them, or they develop early on, anyway. And I do not mean, by the way, racism. I mean that each human has biases about particular aspects of preferences. And, and so, that's why we want to have it be a part of how we do business rather than something separate. That's why we're building it into, so it's, this role is now equity and inclusive teaching and learning practices so that it becomes just really part of how BVSD approaches our work, how our teachers self-reflect, and our leaders, and how we find ways to continue to expand on how we can affirm and build on the assets of the students in front of us.
Okay, so, that is 2324 successes and the alignment with DAC recommendations and our strategic plan review. Would folks like to take a quick break? Metrics is going to take a while.
I was going to say, we're less than halfway through, probably, and we're halfway through our time. So, maybe a quick break if everybody feels like they need to stretch.
Cool.
We will resume our conversation on the proposed plan.
Okay, go back to, so, next topic, pretty, like, 10-minute, more conceptual than actual any content, and then we'll dive into metrics, and then we can kind of talk about next steps as we think about moving forward with UIP, moving forward with metric development, moving forward with dashboard development. And so, why don't we go to data availability and granularity? Back one side. So, board members, one of the things that we promised when we came, when we shared that we were going to have this meeting was to have a calendar, a proposed calendar on how these things align and what your touchpoints were on strategic plan, UIP, and how it integrates with you. So, we have our session today where we're really kind of shaping and getting, you know, some, you know, feedback on kind of direction we're going. Will, on September 10th, you will have the UIP for study plus CMAS data that's coming to you in an information and study item. The September 24th would be the date for you to approve the UIP. And then, that has to be approved by October 1st or November 1st, Jonathan? Or has to be submitted?
By October 15th.
Ah, so, there you go. All right, so, if we do that, that gives us plenty of time. October 15th, we have a session just like this, right, where we'll have some more direction, we'll have some more, a different conversation, right? Because it'll be more about not what are we going to do, it's like how are things shaping up? And then, December 17th, another session just like this, as we prioritize. And then, we put, we just put placeholders in February and June to have two more conversations. With the idea that we'd have four in a typical year, right, play this out, two, three years, you'd have a typical four times of a year check-in where we can dig into stuff, where we can think about things in this type of a format. And so, that is what we're proposing, and we'd already voted on everything but February and June. If you all give us kind of a thumbs up on that, then as we prioritize, when we set our next prioritization meeting, we'll build that, we'll build these in ahead of time. So, thumbs up sideways, thumbs down, let me know what you're thinking. Okay, all right, very good. Sure.
I guess one of the things I'd be interested in is aligning this with like the calendar of data availability. And so, when we think about strategic plan, I'm sure it's the next level of granularity for this, is like, okay, when's the grad rate, when's the dropout?
That's right, yeah. And then, this is what we, so, go back to the previous slide. So, as we think about data granularity, and you're going to look at metrics, here's, you know, the question that we have to ask is what data points and granularity needed for monitoring progress and helping with improvement? What are the things that need to be standard and where do you have to have the abilities to be able to zoom in and zoom back out to know and understand what's happening? And I think that for us, as we think about data systems, we want to build in the right levels of granularity in data to be able to do that in ways that help inform improvement. I would say a big question that I ask is, I think about this in two ways. First of all, it's kind of like, you know, the story of Goldilocks, right? Do you have too much, too little, or just right? I think one of the things that sticks with me is we worked really hard to build a previous set of strategic plan metrics, we engaged the community, we talked about proportionality, we talked about things driving our improvement, and yet, I don't know that our community engaged with those metrics in the ways we would have hoped. Quite honestly, if I think back to all of the emails that I've received over the past five years, you won't know, I've received a lot, and of all of the board work sessions we've had, the board meetings, with all the challenges, issues, questions that our community had, I don't ever remember anybody referencing our old metrics for any of those things. So, it's like, that's kind of sticking with me as we design this. So, you know, too much, too little, just right, too complicated, too simple, just right. The other question I ask is, is the juice worth the squeeze, right? Like, to the extent that you could spend a lot of time and effort analyzing things, when does that make sense and when might not, it not make sense? And I think those are the questions that I ask ourselves, I think we have to ask ourselves as we build a system that's useful, that's transparent and helpful for all the different types of stakeholders we have, and whether it's teachers, whether it's DAX, whether it's the community at large. I think that those are the things that I ask myself. And to that point, I asked our team to think about what's the information we have and when can we have it, right? To Alex's previous point. So, and how does that align with these four areas that we've bubbled up? And what exists here and what needs to exist here for us to have the information that we need? And so, this is a super busy slide. I would say that it's something that we'll have to probably dig into and revisit as we think about the different types of data points that Claire's going to go through. She's going to talk to you about leading indicators, KPIs, and then implementation. And so, we may come back to reference this slide as we start to have that deeper conversation, but I wanted to introduce it to you so you know that the work we've done ahead of time is think about what information do we have that we already collect? When do we get it? What's it aligned to? And how do you pair this together so we can prepare the right quarterly updates for the board, the right dashboards and data views for our community and anybody else who'd want to know how we're doing? So, those are like the big things that we're thinking about in terms of data.
And for folks that can't maybe read all of that very clearly, at the very least, can we just talk about what the different color indicators are to give a section, like an idea of the section? So, grade level standards are in red, tiered supports are in purple.
Good slide.
All the well-being and inclusive measurements would be in that green color and then post-secondary preparedness. So, they're color-coded based on those four categories.
We're getting a copy for everybody.
And then, yeah, they're connected in connection with.
You don't want, you want a takeaway?
Yes, so that, those are the buckets.
Oh, okay.
No, we didn't, we only got, the whole slide deck was not posted to Board Docs, and that's great, that's fine, but for some of these, only Alex and Katie have.
Let's get this on an 11-by-17 for everybody in color that wants it. And then, and there's a couple of things in there, too, where we could have potential different data sources, right? Like, you'll see our mental health evaluation, our Title IX evaluation, there's no checks there because once those are done, they may identify things, like, maybe it informs our school climate survey, maybe it informs some other type of data gathering, maybe it informs some other type of system, so, in any event. Okay. At this point, I am going to turn the presentation over to Claire, who's going to talk to you about how our team has been thinking about data and then talk about some of the possibilities. And then, you know, my hope is that people are engaging and interactive in this piece so we know and understand what resonates with board members and where there might be some opportunities for some different thinking. So, Claire, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Excited to be here and talk with you about data.
Excited to be here and talk with you about data. So, as I've been brought into this project, when I tried to think like, what's the really big question that we're trying to tackle here? It's, how might we measure our strategic plan process? So that's why we want to be really purposeful when looking at our data. Thinking about all of the potential data sources that we could look at, all of the things we measure, I really wanted to strike a good balance and help to identify a few things. So one, we want our measures to be valid and reliable, of course, that's the gold standard. So making sure that these are things that we measure consistently and accurately, and we're confident in them. We want measures that are representative of all of our students, so things that are measured widely across our whole system. So that's kind of another lens we're putting on this. Measures that are aligned with each of the focus areas of the plan that we've been talking about this morning. And we also need to identify data that helps us to answer very specific questions. So I wanted to start by just sharing what are those buckets of how we're thinking about organizing and presenting all of this data. So in one bucket, we have our key performance indicators, and that's really where we're going to be focusing this morning. And your hefty printed packet has many of those dashboard concepts with the key performance indicators. So focusing on those, the, what we're really trying to answer with our KPIs is did we meet student outcome targets? That's what we want to know. These have to be focused metrics. We will use them to set our annual targets of performance of how we're doing. And so these are typically summative or end-of-year results, as you'll see. You'll see CMAS, PSAT, SAT, et cetera. In other words, these are lagging measures. Another level of data that we do look at, and we will be sharing more throughout this year, are leading measures. So these are the kinds of metrics that help us answer whether or not we're on track to meet those student outcome targets. How are we doing through the year before we get to that end-of-year measure? So these have to be tightly aligned to the key performance indicators. We use them to monitor our progress towards those specific targets that we will be setting. And these are more interim frequently updated. And then another level, and this has also come up in conversation already this morning, would be implementation measures. So with those, we are trying to get at, are we implementing our plan as intended? How is it going? These are more focused on adult actions. You know, how well is DDI being implemented across our schools, for example? We use these to monitor progress on our action steps, and these also get updated multiple times per year to help inform us on, do we need to pivot, make changes in our plan? Okay, so what I will share next is sort of the global dashboard that brings all of this together into one snapshot. That was something that we did hear from the DAC recommendations, was to provide easily accessible snapshots of our data. So I'm going to start there, but just know that we also will spend a lot of time stepping through all of the drill-down concepts from there. So more specifically, we will be looking at, first of all, a few key groups. So we'll look at some trends overall for all of our students in the district. We will also look at trends for students eligible for meal assistance, or we also refer to that as FRL, and then students who identify as Hispanic, Latino. Those are kind of our first cut, kind of key focus groups. And then we will drill down to about 10 additional student groups to really get into the details of the data. I'll mention, you know, we've had some mention about, we want to be, of course, incorporating data from emerging bilinguals, our gifted and talented students, students served through IEPs. I've also heard feedback of, for example, looking at students with Middle Eastern or North African backgrounds. Some of these groups, that's a group, for example, that we don't have the data on at this point. That's not a category that the state has us collect at this point, although we anticipate that will be coming online, as that's a group that's added to the census. So I can take questions about that as well, of which groups are included, which are not at this point. All right, so I'm going to step through, kind of organizing this by our focus areas. So our first focus area, in terms of a key performance indicator, we want to be able to answer the question of, did students demonstrate mastery of the standards? So our proposed KPI here are the state summative achievement results. So here's the snapshot level of that, and this is also, you do have this printed. So what we are looking at here are combined metric of percentages of students who are meeting or exceeding the standards in literacy and math. And we've combined CMAS, PSAT, and SAT. And this is the latest 2024 data that's being shown here. So, yeah.
Just a question, you said by, it's combined those four, CMAS, PSAT, and SAT. Is it, are they given equal weight, or how is that shown here?
It's just, I mean, essentially by, it's not weighted. So it's, yeah, we're just combining the whole cohort of students who took any of those tests.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so PSAT is ninth and 10th grade, then SAT is 11th grade, yeah. So it does break up by grade level, and we, we'll show that later too. Yeah, got it.
Claire, why don't you run through all of these snapshots, and then you can pause?
Okay.
Because then after that, you're going to go to the drill downs, and I think that's where there's going to be a lot of interest, so.
All right, sounds good. So our focus on tiered supports, that, our key question there is, did students achieve academic growth? So that is looking at the state summit of growth percentile, so those same tests that I just mentioned, but now a growth metric for post-secondary preparation. We want to know if students have pursued opportunities that prepared them for post-secondary pathways. So that's all focused around grad plus. There's a lot packed in here, but what we look at globally is, did students pursue an opportunity and achieve in at least one of the areas of grad plus? And then we look specifically within each of those four areas, college credit, industry certifications, seal of by literacy, and work-based learning. And then our fourth focus area of looking at student well-being and inclusive practices, we want to know if students are experiencing positive and fair environments in school regardless of their background. So we've pulled a few metrics together to look at this. We are including student responses on the school climate survey. We have a suspension rate metric. And then we also have a metric that is focused on use of restorative practices in our schools.
Could you talk a little bit about how to interpret the growth percentiles?
Yeah, yeah, so those follow the Colorado growth model. And so what they look at is comparing students to their academic peers. So the state creates these cohorts of students who perform similarly in one year, and then looking at their growth from the prior year to the current year. And so in terms of percentiles, you could say, for example, in reading, all students, we have a median growth percentile 55. So at the median, a student who had a score of 55 would have performed better than 55% of their academic peers. Typically, for growth percentile, the sort of standard rule of thumb we look at is 50, as a good comparison point of making good growth above that.
Can you explain a little bit more the theory of change that leads to growth being considered a tiered support versus achievement and growth, both being based on grade level standards and instruction? I mean, I think the median growth percentile gets us at the median student, and a bunch of our tiered supports are for atypical students. So at some level, it's, it's not necessarily focusing on the right kids on the performance spectrum that our tiered supports might be touching. Now, of course, the, the median growth percentile will go up with a strong set of tiered interventions, but I don't really see the logical connection between tiered interventions and the growth percentile as opposed to the CMAS achievement data.
Time off, Alex, will you say it again? Yeah.
So, we measure achievement with like CMAS and the PSAT, and we get the score that people have. And then we measure the amount of growth that a student has from one year over the next to get the growth measure. Both are measuring how well the student is doing in English, language arts, or math. Now, when we do the median growth percentile, we are finding out all the students of a subgroup and how much growth they made from one year to the next. And as a median, that's the one that's right in the middle. So that's the, what is the amount of growth per year that the average student has? Our tiered systems of supports are frankly not for the modal or median student. They're, they may be in terms of performance, but there's something else going on that puts them outside that. So I, I'm not sure that makes sense then. So if someone is struggling or someone is high-performing, they're pretty far from the median. And so it's, it's really helpful to understand the system in terms of its performance to look at that, you know, 50% kid and say, what, how much are they growing? Then you get a sense of what's going on. But we could be doing terrible with kids in the 0 through 10th percentile, and we could be doing great with them, and it would not change the median growth percentile.
So how would you suggest we look at it differently, I guess, is my question, now that I understand what you're saying?
It's a great question. I'm not sure. I'd love to talk about it more. That's why I'm asking sort of, you know, what's the theory of change that leads to the assumption that the median growth percentile is the right measure for that? I would think I'm much more interested in knowing, what's the median growth percentile of the people in Tier 2? Or the students with disabilities, or the multi-language learners? And then breaking that out with subgroups by free and reduced price lunch amongst those students, or multi-language learners and Hispanic kids? So I, I think we'd get a better sense looking at both achievement and growth for like across tabs. And again, I don't know how to make, turn that into a KPI because it's too complicated. But I'm not convinced that growth, median growth percentile captures a tiered support.
So Rob raised his hand, then I saw Jonathan leaning in, if Jonathan had something to add after Rob.
I, I don't, I don't think it's that complicated. I, I mean, because, and states do this differently, right? In Colorado, I think all the measures have been designed to include all kids, right? So median growth percentile is one way to look at a set of data to see who grew or not, right? So, look at the bottom quartile of students, what, what percentage of those students grew? I mean, you could slice it up by quartile, or you could say of the bottom 25% of students, what number, what percentage of those kids met benchmark or didn't meet benchmark? I think that we have the information, we could look at it in different ways. I will say that, you know, in, in designing these, and I'll let Jonathan and Claire add in, I think that we can do any of those things and look at things differently. General public, when they just, when they hear about growth, they're going to look at it like this. So the question would be, right, do we have a more complex set, right? As we think about tiered supports, right? One that looks at everybody, but then one that looks at students who weren't growing or they're growing this year. And then could you potentially look at kids that we're giving interventions to? And, I mean, then you'd have to ask you, do you want the median growth percentile? Or do you want the percentage of students who met benchmark, or the percentage of students who increased their growth? I think, you could slice it any way that you want to. Every kid has a score, right? And so then to the extent that we create the algorithms to break that out, I will say that, you know, the navigating between the public's going to see and then what we do, the more complicated we get, the more, I think, just public instruction we, we need to do around that. But I would say, I hear what you're saying, Alex, and I do think that there's different ways that we could slice that, and we could do one of two things, we talked about that now. We can hear this, hear the sentiment of the board and, and go back to the drawing board and, and give some different ideas and thoughts, and bring something back at a, at a later time.
For me, this does bring up what we're putting public-facing versus what we have access to so that we have a greater understanding. You know, I'd like to understand kids with IEPs, what's happening with their growth? Our GT kids, what's happening with their growth? So I, I think I would be more interested in a deeper dive, but I, I really want to acknowledge what you're saying, that for general public consumption, this would be the measure that somebody might come in and look at. So do we have two different dashboards? I mean, that's, I guess I'm interested in having that conversation now so I know as we're looking at this presentation, are we talking about what we're, what's outward-facing or what we have access to?
Well, what Alex is talking about is a more precise measure. If, I don't care the subgroup, if you do a median, right? You're taking, you could have 10 kids get 100, right? And like, 10 kids get 100, and then your average is 50. So it's, it's, you know, a median growth percentile versus the percentage of kids who hit a threshold, it's, it's almost a different way of potentially looking at it. And I do think that the conversation that we have to have, right, is what granularity? And this, what we're talking about is measuring it just, just the same but differently in a way that tells, tells you, all right, you know, our theory is if we do these interventions, X percentage of kids that are getting Tier 2 support or Tier 3 support or what have you are going to outgrow their peers, right? Now, you've got to also think that the way that our state does this is different than other states. In other states, peer groups get down to the, I scored a 50 last year, and I measured against kids who were absent the same number of days as I was, that are also on free and reduced lunch and also have IEPs, right? And here, it's just they get measured against everyone. So states do that differently and nuance that differently. So, you know, if we're saying, you know, like peers from a test score percentage, not like peers in terms of other demographics or challenges, or aspects. So we're getting kind of technical. You got to lift me up if I'm getting too technical, but I want to answer Alex's question. I understand that, like, so, like, we could, we could model some different things on what that might look like.
Can I jump in? It's related to both Alex's question and Alenia's. What will that help us do differently with different slices of data? Not just for this particular question, but as we work through, like, what will it help us do and under, differently? Or help us, how will slicing and looking at different parts of data help our public understand? Or will it create more confusion? So those are some things that I'm holding. As we go through these conversations, as it relates to our role, as it relates to teacher slices, which are very different, and they have different views versus principles, or, I mean, there's all kinds of different slices. But for the role of each individual, what is the slice that's most appropriate for them?
The more accurate the data is, right, as, as we're talking it here, the higher someone's data literacy needs to be to understand the difference, right? You know, to understand the difference between a median growth percentile score and the percentage of kids within a certain quartile that grow, or the percentage of kids within a certain subgroup grow, right? That's a different, like, it's how many kids are crossing the line versus the average time of the kids that took to cross the line, right? Like, if I had to like quantify that? And so we would have to work with our team on some of those things. I would say that, that this is the challenge, like, you know, and this is what I think we ran into the last time we set metrics. We want them to be statistically accurate. We have a highly educated community, some of which are very in tune. And we always want to be transparent and have data, data that's, that's real-time, valid, and reliable. And when you get to a certain level of data literacy needed to understand what we're doing, how many folks then don't get access to the data and understand it?
I'd love to hear from Jonathan and Claire on this one. I, I do suggest we have the time at some point to, to dive into the deeper level. And I'm totally sensitive to what goes into a KPI that is publicly consumable. But, but when, but when you've got a measure that is, it's really not speaking to the question that you think you're talking to, it doesn't help that it's simple or that it's understandable if it's wrong. And I think trying to get at the tiered supports through the median growth may suffer from that problem. So I'd like us to find something that speaks to the students that are receiving the tiered supports, which for me, there's no obvious connection to the median growth percentile and the students receiving the tiered supports. So that's why I'm like, okay, well, is, is there a logic to this? And what would be a better measure of that?
And I, I am a proponent of, I understand what Alex is saying, that, that this needs some work on tiered supports. And I don't understand what the answer is because I'm on the lower end of data, data literacy. I'll say that right now, like, I can, I understand what you're saying, but I'm definitely not at your level of it. I do think that one of our roles is... Um, I do think that one of our roles is accountability, holding accountability. And that's why I think it's important that we have access to it. I don't necessarily think that you have to overwhelm public with it. And you want to have the correct thing out there for the public, right? Um, but I, I am going to put in a plug here for that we have access to it. I think that's super important.
I'll let Jonathan speak next.
What you will have access to, the public will have access to. Like, so it won't be like, so, so, but that doesn't mean it's not pub, it doesn't have to be public facing, right? To your point, like, but it's not like we're going to look at something different than the public would be able to access. I think that that has to be the case. So, uh, but you could do it a couple of ways, right? Like, you could do it as we're measuring this to measure a superintendent's goal, or we're measuring this to measure a, uh, ROI on a certain incident. Like, you can do it in ways where it's, there's some sense-making for the public. It's not just a bunch of data that folks don't understand why we're collecting it, what question is it answering? And so I, this is the kind of conversation we're hoping to have around these things, right? Like, these are first cuts of this. Um, I know folks want to talk, and I, and then I'll, I know Jonathan wants to talk too. Maybe Jonathan can speak, and then other board members. I think Kitty had her hands up, and then Jorge.
So I, um, really appreciate the clarification that the question isn't as much about the, the growth metric per se, as it is about what group of students is the ones that's measured there. As far as the logic of, of keeping the overall group, right? The, the, the way you move, move a median is to move, um, a large number of, a large number of kids. So, um, so you're, you're right that if your target is 20% of them, or 25, or 30, um, that it's, that there's some wish to be able to focus in on that, that group. I would point out a couple of things. One, that at some level, this puts pressure on the accuracy of our ability to say, who is every kid who is getting, um, anything that's within Tier Two? And, and I, um, and I, and I think as we think expansively about what Tier Two could mean, that, that, you know, we'll, we'll have to think about that and, and figure out what the best metric is too. Um, yeah, but there, there are also other ways. I mean, we tend to look at data in multiple ways to, to, to see the picture. For, for systems that support it, we would look at the percentile, the achievement percentile gain from one season of testing to the next. So there are, there are other metrics we would, we would, we would add. But I, I do appreciate the willing, the want to focus on this and the, the question about how we should do that best.
I really appreciate the point raised about, you know, who the, who the appropriate group is, and maybe being able to make those meaningful comparisons. Um, I think my question was, from the starting point, was making this accessible to, to parents and families. And, and as we look at our dashboards, you know, the, and I think back to the DAC, the hardest point was understanding that median growth percentile. There's, of course, a median, it's not an average, so it means something different. It's growth, so it's change over time, right? And what comparisons, and I think having that information available on the dashboards to explain how you interpret these and who the appropriate comparison is, right? That the fifth, the median is 50 for overall students, right? 50% below and 50% above. And, and having that information available, I think, is just to make it useful.
And, and we can workshop some of this stuff, right? Like, so to the extent that, you know, we get feedback from the board, some different cuts, more feedback from the board, let's go out and just workshop it with our community. What makes sense, what doesn't make sense? What needs to be public facing? What needs to be driven eternally to whether it's superintending goals or ROI? Like, you know, categorize that. So we have the information. So folks, we want to make sure, you know, to, to answer everybody's questions, right? And be as precise as we can to know if the things we're doing are working or not working, right? That's, you know, an important part of getting better. So this is all great feedback, great, great conversation.
I was just going to suggest that due to time, we could move on. Because I don't understand any of this, but I'm not going to ask any question. I understand what the words mean, but that's it. I'll figure it out.
I have one question, um, on the wellbeing inclusive practices. We have historically measured ourselves around that question about my teacher cares about me in the school climate survey. There are other questions, like, looking at the survey, I feel like I belong. I am accepted. I feel like I'm a part of the school. And so I'm curious, if we're thinking about wellbeing, we have a host of questions that are available, that we have some historical information on. Why, um, why do we continue to use the my teacher cares about me? Just a question there.
I, I just think that that's the metric that we had established, so you could have year-over-year clarity. There's certain, certainly opportunities to get better. And, and, and we can bring that back to our team. And if it's, if it's the survey questions and a combination of the questions that make sense, we can roll that up in a better, different way, for sure. That's easy. I think that in Claire, remember, now, now, these are, you know, these are Claire's first cuts to show you kind of how we can look at the data. I'm, I'm really appreciating the depth of the conversation. Um, and here's, so here's what I'm hearing. And she didn't get to go through post-secondary preparation and wellbeing and inclusive practices, so I'll let her kind of go over that if she, if she thinks that helps. I'm hearing tiered support, work to do around tiered support in regards to how do we, how do we dial in to know how many of the kids in tier supports are learning, growing or not growing, achieving or not achieving? And how do we unmask that from median growth percentile to some other way to demonstrate that how much they're growing and, and then kind of like think about that? And then wellbeing and inclusive practices, this, you know, really thinking about maybe, you know, some kind of a, a combination of other questions over time. So we, we could go back historically to compare. You'd have a historical comparison as long as the questions already exist in the climate survey. Uh, and then, and then wrapping that up. And, uh, we can collect some board feedback on that through, through just kind of conversation, and then kind of move, move in that direction there too.
I've heard Dr. Anderson say he wanted to talk about the post-secondary preparedness quadrant, and then I saw Alex raise his hand. So I want to address both of those.
Uh, I just want to clarify one thing. I'm a huge fan of the Colorado growth model and its application and its utility to solving these problems. So I'm all about finding a solution that uses the student growth to understand those things. My only concern about the current one is that we may be missing where, where the kind of actionable data is. So like, if your top performing kids aren't growing as much as they should, then that's sort of what's GT for, you know, growth. And if it's in the bottom quartile, it's a totally different solution set. So that's why I'm, that's my feedback there. I'm a total fan of the growth, and I think it actually intuitively kind of makes sense to, to parents, even if they're not dealing with the details of how it works. And then on the inclusive piece, I'm a total fan also of what social sciences would generally do, which is to create indices or indexes of these things. And so rather than pick the one measure that makes the most sense, we're like, what is holistically or comprehensively is how do kids feel in this school? And if we have data from repeatedly from a bank of questions, then I would build an index on it and say, what's the, what's the wellbeing index change?
Could you speak to indices just a little more for those of us who don't know?
So if you ask people five questions on the survey, you can figure out which question is most important. And you might say, oh, this one correlates with an outcome we care about. So that's the most important thing. So I wouldn't be surprised if the, a teacher cares about me may correlate the strongest of all five questions. But if you really want to understand the nuance in a place, and like, if you did a case study of the school, you wouldn't just ask that question, you'd ask people all five questions. And then you, you'd do analysis and think about it and try to make sense of it. So the, the statistical way to make sense of it is to, to, to add up the scores of the, all five questions and give a point or a weight to them, and say for each one where, you know, this one's twice as important as the others, so it gets a little more weight. This one's not as important, but it gets one point. And so you end up, instead of having five questions where you get a 4.5 and a 3.2, you end up with a, you add up all those numbers, and then you say, oh, this school has a 17 out of 20 possible points. That's better than a different school that only has 11 out of 20 possible points. And you end up with a more comprehensive, holistic view of what's going on in terms of wellbeing. And then you can adjust those over time. And we have some pretty sophisticated survey data from our own instruments and the state's instruments that would allow us to say, you know, it's doing pretty good, but the Title IX, the women don't feel safe in this building, right? And so then you'd have a difference between women not feeling safe in a comprehensive high school or the history of sexual assault from a, a high poverty school where, um, kids feel bullied and under-resourced and disproportionate disciplines playing out. So it captures different things, but still allows you to prioritize which schools have a low score overall.
I would say that the one question I'd have on that is yes and, right? If we know that schools with higher populations of certain sub-populations, right? If all schools aren't the same, right, from a breakup standpoint, right? And we know that certain groups of, subgroups of students are feeling certain things systemically, that when you put a score on a school that has a disproportionate number of students, you know, in, in some type of subgroup, and people are comparing that school to another school who doesn't have those challenges, how, how do you lift up that nuance? Right? Like, if I were to do this on discipline, there's like five schools that have more discipline than other schools, right? And, and so those five schools have more kids in poverty, right? And whether they're, like, it's, it's, when you get to, to that piece for a school, right? How do you, how do you level out for that? I do like the idea of an index. I do like the idea of getting more precise and persistent and, and holistic. I don't think one question is probably the fit, the, the way that this board or, or anybody really wants to move forward. And so let us play with that a little bit. I would just say that the one thing that, when I think about this is, when you do something to a school in a place where a third parent's pick a school different than their home school, right? You, when you, when you, when you dial something in specifically to a school, you could potentially impact enrollment patterns, right? That could potentially compound issues at schools because of something that we've presented that, so I'm just super sensitive to that because I do think that declining enrollment, enrollment patterns, all the rules and regulations around that, how those all jive into making sure that A, we're saying, yes, you know, schools are doing well or not well. And if they're not doing well, we need to help them and support them or hold them accountable, surely, right? But I think that that would be the one thing that, that, that we should consider collectively.
Okay. Um, I would, like, this is a great conversation. I'm really enjoying the feedback and, um, hearing these ideas. And I think too that, um, our approach of looking at, you know, this is, again, the level of the key performance indicators, but also having leading measures that we'll plan to bring back multiple times during the year. Um, I think will help a lot with this too, in terms of having multiple data sources, cross-referencing, and really helping to put together a more complete picture. Okay. Um, anything else for this slide or, okay, our next piece is, um, for each of these focus areas, we have lots of data to look at. Um, I have prepared these draft drill-down view concepts. Um, so here's the first one. This is diving into, um, looking at grade level standards and instruction. First, again, by those same three focus groups that we've already looked at. So the drill down here, at the top level, those circular charts, that's still showing the same information you just saw on the dashboard. Then below that is showing the trend over time. So for example, in the blue, um, those line charts are showing year-to-year changes in percentages of students who met or exceeded the standards, broken up by content area. Um, same idea when you look down through all of the green charts, those are FRL eligible students. All of the orange charts are Hispanic, Latino students. So I'll give you a moment to take a look at that.
And just a point of clarification, the reason that, um, FRL and Hispanic, Latino are the two first subgroups that we pull out is because the N sizes are the largest.
So, um, as we go from there, the next page, this is starting to drill down into some of our additional groups that I know, like, we also always look at and need to talk about as well. So the next, um, view here, this cut is looking at a drill down by race and ethnicity categories. Oh, thank you. Sorry, did it on my computer, not the screen? Thank you. Um, so drill down by race and ethnicity categories. Again, you can kind of follow it down in a column. So we have the group labeled at the top. We've got the, um, 2024 results of meeting or exceeding, um, standards, and then the overtime results in the line at the bottom.
So I would like to have a conversation here about N size. And you can see very clearly when we have very small student populations, how it makes chi, any change, like, the first, the, in the bottom left corner, a change of a couple of students makes that chart look very different. Um, or that graph look very different. And I, and that is the case with data when we have very small sizes. You see, there's a higher degree of variability and fluctuations as, as those small numbers move. And how is that useful to us? And for somebody that's not data savvy, what might they take away from here that might be more or less beneficial when we show these small sample sizes?
So what you could do, right, um, is create some outlier criteria where when a subgroup, regardless of N size, you know, makes big changes one way or the other, or is not accessing something one way or the other? Like, you could create some type of a, of a, like a rule, a data rule, where when that happens, like, there, there could be something lifted up so we don't lose it, right? But we also don't overemphasize when you go from, you have the same number of students, black or African-American in reading meet in the benchmark, and you go down by 5%. Like, that can be confusing. However, right, like, if any subgroup goes down, you know, I don't know, you, you set the rule 10%, we're going to lift that up. Or if they go up 10%, we're going to lift that up as, as an assurance to our community that we're not forgetting about any students, right? But, uh, it's not as useful to look at the every day, but we should have a safeguard to say, when it hits certainly, then you all as a board would know, hey, there's big changes here, plus or minus, and we're going to look at that. Because then you could do deeper dives to see if there, is there, is there a subgroup that's not getting access to something? Is, are they not getting access to interventions, advanced courses? Like, what is it? And so you could set some rules up on that, so it's not always have, but if the rules hit, then it comes up.
And then a follow-up, and then Alenia and Alex, sorry. What, for student privacy, when we have these small samples, do we have a district-wide policy on where we stop reporting? Because our, I'm thinking as we get more granular to site bases or different things where it really becomes easy to identify specific students, being cautious about that if we have a district sort of policy or practice that we could, that you might want to share now? So we're really clear on where that becomes a student privacy issue as well?
We've, we've followed the, the number that CDE has, which is an, which is an N of 16. So if you're reporting an average, it should be based on that number. Or if you're reporting the incidence of something occurring for a group, the group shouldn't be smaller than 16 at that school or the whole district. So there's some further elaborations on it we can do about when you report by categories, then it, then, you know, you, some, some more little things can get added to that. But 16 is generally the number. And obviously, there's a pretty big runway between 16 and the point at which you want to show cha, changes of a point or two on a, on a scale is being something you want to lift up as opposed to saying, um, look, this varies. This is made more complex by participation rates so that you can not only have groups that are basically small, but one or two different students participating in a given year will, will help drive that also, so.
Even as novice as I am, I do think that I understand N size pretty well. And I think that if we have those, um, if, if we're clear with our public that there is an N size component here, I think that's good. And I really appreciate seeing it. So I'm a proponent of, as long as we are keeping those privacy concerns top of mind, that, and we are having a disclaimer on N size, I do think it's appropriate to be sharing this data.
I, I will say that this affects granularity, right? You can have district-wide cuts, right? But, you know, most of those, you know, with those subgroups with 38, you know, 20, maybe even 160, like, it might prevent you from getting to cla, to school-level data, so.
I think it was Alex and Kitty.
I really appreciate the discussion of the N size and, and what to do with it. Uh, in my day job, we work with, um, a gentleman out in California who's been analyzing different state accountability systems. And, and one of his standing recommendations, which Colorado doesn't do, is to really get to confidence intervals and, you know, probability. is to really get to confidence intervals and probability ranges. So, which are totally a function of, of cell size. So it'd be good to know that a difference of going from 40 to 41% or 61 to 64 in a group that's small, like, is no statistical difference to someone who knows what's going on statistically. So I don't know how we do that in Colorado. It's an advocacy point Rob can maybe bring to the task force, that they would include.
Have you been watching the task force?
Well, but it's better than, I, I do believe there's a responsible way to share the data. And the confidence interval or the probability that it's different is the way to discuss it while screening it. And I think it's really key to keep in mind that our people in our MTSS systems and in our schools need N of 1 data to work with, so that they're talking about an individual child that they're trying to help. So you can have the desire to keep the granularity appropriate, get in the way of actually applying the data at the school site. So I want to make sure that we are as interested in responsible transparency, coach people on it to the extent we can, talk them down when they're overinterpreting, you know, small groups, and then support the people in the schools who are doing data-driven inquiry about what they're doing, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what each of these numbers is, because I see the, and looking in the circles, I see the percentage. The number underneath is the N, correct? What is the number underneath where it says met reading?
That's number of all students tested.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so the percentage met.
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
Yeah, and then all students.
So the, the, the N in terms of testing is the bottom one. The N in terms of met is the top. Okay, I've got that. Now, looking down at the bar graph underneath, it appears to me, and I'm, tell me if I'm wrong in interpreting this, but I'm looking at the first one under American, Indian, Native, Alaskan. Under reading, it looks like, so, okay, these are, the Ns here are just the numbers that met. Okay, now I understand why they're different. I thought maybe fewer people took the math test. Got it, thank you.
I do think there's one other thing that would help people understand. And again, I'm a data nerd by nature. But I do think as long as you've got subgroups with much larger stuff available at the state, reporting state averages on these things, for many of these smaller subgroups, like, you look at this and you come away with a pretty profound, if you're doing the analysis and you have some data literacy, you see the achievement gaps and the opportunity gaps that are going on. And I think to understand and interpret those gaps, it helps to have the state averages to show that's like, hey, we are doing better or worse than even the state on this measure, even though we have an apparent performance gap going on.
And that's something that I've been thinking a lot about, too, Alex, is, particularly where it feels like we're incredibly disproportionate. How, how can we celebrate, still show how we are doing compared to others? Because that is a, we are, for a lot of our historically marginalized subgroups that we call out specifically, we are doing better than our, like, districts, and we are doing better than the state average. And so how can we have that in context? That context, I think, is really powerful for our community to understand, for our board members to understand. And so when that becomes available at this next slide, after today, I think that would be a really important measure as we're trying to promote change here.
To that point, I mentioned Steve Reese, who I work with professionally when we work with school districts on how to oversee charter schools. One of his additional strategies, which is something that would take extra work or advocacy, again, at the state level, is to deal with sort of district-like district comparisons and really understand, okay, well, who do you compare Boulder to in terms of other districts? And who do you compare a particular school to compared to other schools? And so it's, the growth measures trying to capture that, and the subgroups and the cross tabs try to capture that. But the other thing we could aspire to as a state or as the front-range districts is having, like, okay, what do, what do the districts of our size and similar demographics do with these subpopulations? So there's all sorts of ways to cut that that give us relative.
I would say that, speaking of the statewide accountability task force that I've spent more than 100 hours on, but who's counting? One of the things that I'm advocating for is a beating-the-odds measure, right? And so that is where you take school, but it's more the school-based versus the district. But if the governor were thinking about awards to hand out in addition to some of the, a district award would be a beating-the-odds district where schools with like populations are over, are just performing better with similar context. It's something that we had in Georgia. And so I, I believe that's going to be in the final report. I've advocated for that. For like districts, I think that we have some districts that we can line ourselves up with in Colorado. And I do think that there is a subset of national districts that we compare ourselves to. Some of that data is, is not available because of a data-sharing agreement that we have with some of those districts who, I mean, I just, if, there's, there's some complexities. It's for improvement, not for public consumption, but we do have some of that. But, but I agree, and I do definitely agree with the context, right? And, and I think that that's an important thing that we can think about now that the data has been released from embargo today. So next cutback, we can, that's something we can look at. We have 30 minutes, so we're going to have to let Claire do some talking, so.
Okay. Well, the next slide is very similar, but we're just cutting the data in different ways. So now we've got, instead pulling out our patterns among our emerging bilingual students, students served through special education, and students identified as gifted and talented. Same general concept here. And then for this metric as well, on the next slide, we can also break this down by grade level. And this will also break out, we've got grades three through eight, that would be the C math test, nine and 10 PSAT, grade 11 is SAT.
So I have a question here, on the bottom half of this. When we're comparing grades over time, it's not a cohort, we're not talking about cohorts. It's like, how did, so there are different folks are taking those tests year over year. And is this the best way to look at this information? And does it give us what we want? Or is following a cohort and their change over time getting at what we want in a better, clearer way? I just, when, as we're presenting this data, we need to be, and maybe it's just sharing, this is not the same group of people. And so we, there might be some variability that we would expect. But that's the one thing with this bottom half of the slide, I would like to talk through a little bit the benefits and risks with it.
I think the challenge with cohort data is that the cohort continues to shrink over time, right? Like, if you have, if you have a set of data rules, right? And we could do, you could do it. It's more complicated, it's going to take some more work to kind of, you know, figure out who counts and who doesn't, and more of a big, long data spreadsheet could be helpful. And then, again, I think that these, these data points can lift up outliers, right? You know, as we have these, these community events, different generations that are coming through, what are the things that we can notice, right? I mean, I think that the thing that I really like to know is, you know, the kids coming in third grade, you know, that helps as a measure. One we're struggling with in our state accountability task force is, how do you measure K2? What's happening in K2? There's a lot of critical work that happens there, and how do you measure that over time? Again, these are data looks that, that we have. I do think that the cohort is another look that you could have. I think that the limitations could be just, you know, you would have to figure out a way to communicate to folks that the longer, if the, the earlier you measure, the smaller the group becomes. And then kids who move, kids who don't stay in one place, right? It could, you, you have a different dataset, five years down the line, which you're measuring is kids who've been in the system for five years, which may not be, I mean, I just think there's, could be challenges there.
Jonathan, and then Alex.
And the, and the added challenge is, in terms of the, the public, if they're, if they're looking on the bottom line and they're following a kid from grade four math to grade five math to grade six math, you can see that those, that those percentages aren't the same. So, so a member of the public following a kid, if we did this for a group of kids, right? We would see a number that got higher in fifth grade and lower in sixth grade, but it only got higher or lower probably because of where the tests, the test cut score was basically set. So, so we have, we have ways, we can, can do this, but they get pretty complex pretty fast. And then there's the question about finding a comparable, if data is set basically statewide, right? So, so it, so I, I, this is part of what I like about growth percentiles, is that they, they do a lot of that work for you in some of those regards. But we've done, you know, we, we've, we've worked with this over, over time, and it just, it gets complex.
I have one suggestion in terms of presentation. I, I think the pie charts or the modified pie charts are best for comparing proportions within a, within a single group. So if you want to know, is it a quarter people do X out of this and 70% do Y? What we, when you're presenting a whole bunch of pie charts next to each other, the intuitive analysis is much more difficult. So, like, I would think that a bar chart or a line chart would be, a bar chart probably makes the most sense, like, this one. So you'd be able to see this elementary to middle school disjunction that Jonathan's talking about, right? And so, like, now, someone reading it has to go through, okay, 63, 65, 66, then 62, you know, they're doing that. And you miss out on the visualness that you'd get with a bar chart, it's the same thing.
Thank you. Bar charts are probably my favorite as well. All right. So I'm going to go through, I think, now that you've seen the concept, I'll go through these a little bit quicker because I've really applied pretty much the same ideas to each of the focus areas again. But I'll take a moment on this, we're shifting to looking at our, sorry, I want to make sure. Yeah, tiered supports, so looking at our growth measure here. So this is, again, going back to our three focus groups. At the top of this page, this is the data that was in that dashboard, kind of squished down into one corner of it. But looking at those median growth percentiles in each content area for each focus group in 2024. And then down below is the historical trend. So those are stacked up. You can see the year is labeled along the, on the rows, and again, broken up to reading and math. So just to orient to how that's laid out here. And then just quickly, I'll go through these, and then we can pause for any more conversation. But then there's the same kind of scheme of showing that data, now broken down by race, ethnicity, broken down by programs, and then broken down by grade level.
Any thoughts on those visualizations? Do they solve different problems in the other looks? Are both, just be, we're going to figure out a way to collect all of your feedback and information comprehensively. This is just kind of the initial thinking, in different ways you can show the same info. Thumbs up, thumbs up to move, move on?
Or, I guess, one other subgroup on the performance stuff I might suggest would be gender.
Okay, so as I move us along. So now looking at post-secondary preparedness. So this is, this is a rich dataset. Oops, sorry, jumping too fast. So this is a pretty rich dataset. So again, I kind of went through this quickly before, but what we're looking at, so if we look at our top chart, on the left side, the metric is grad plus overall. So that's looking at of graduating seniors, what percentage of those seniors achieved at least one or more of the grad plus quadrants. So that's sort of the bundled-together metric. And then we do break it out by those quadrants, and that would be earning college credit, earning an industry certification, the CLA by literacy, or experiencing work-based learning. And so again, the top chart, that's our class of 2024. And then below that, we have it broken down into a year-over-year of graduates and completers from prior years and then up to last year.
I really like this look because it could show you exactly where our work is, right? I mean, concurrent, college credit has gone through the roof, industry certs a little bit, CLA by literacy. You know, we would hope that as our students are going through our Manhattan program and our Angivine program and our KC program, that those numbers, you know, tick up as those kids, you know, start to matriculate. And then work-based learning, you know, that's why it's one of our, our areas within our, our focus areas around the disproportionality on who's getting access to that. Probably kids whose parents can help them out.
All right. So I'll just mention, we've got then these same metrics broken down by race, ethnicity, and broken down by programs. We can't do a grade level breakdown here because, again, this is just focusing on seniors. So also, just a curiosity if there are other additional groups of interest to look at this dataset.
I do think it would be interesting, and I don't know what the results would be, but I do think this is another one where gender variations would be helpful.
And you're just thinking, like, access to coursework, you know, how are we encouraging?
Yeah, and historical patterns of women not in science visits at the college level, or if we're doing a bunch of career placement and it's all boys' career placement and things from traditional gender roles that are exacerbating.
That's a good insight, yeah.
Okay. So then I'll bring it to our fourth focus area on student well-being and inclusive practices. So again, this is bundling a few metrics into our one view. We start by breaking it down by our focus groups. But again, at the top, we'll look at our most recent full year of data. So the survey question that we've discussed, a suspension rate metric. And then, again, I think I just quickly said, we put in a metric about restorative practices. So just to clarify that a little bit more, what we're looking at is the percentage of students who had one or more restorative intervention out of all of the students who had a behavior incident. And that's specifically looking at students who were, like, directly involved, participating or the offender in that incident.
I might be more interested in, well, I'm, I'm not sure how we're looking at that. Will you explain it to me again so that I understand if it's getting to what we're trying to do with restorative justice?
Yes, and thank you, because we had a lot of discussion about this, too, because it is, it's tricky, for sure. And while it is, you know, restorative practices are a positive side, we don't necessarily want those to go up and up because that's also, behaviors are going up. So where's the balance there? We've had a lot of discussion around that. So what we, we wanted to have a metric that would reflect the practices and, I mean, really looking at how students are served with that as an intervention, as an alternative to suspension, hopefully. So just in our, in our numbers, we can look at the specific code that is restorative intervention. That's something that we have clearly coded in our system. So we pulled out those numbers. So it's the percentages of students who experienced that resolution for an incident. And our denominator is all of the students who had any kind of behavior incident in the year.
Are we looking at if the students who received the restorative practice are coming back again? Or if the students who are suspended are re-suspended? Because that's what I'm interested in, is what restorative justice is trying to navigate is recidivism. And this doesn't seem to be getting it, but I'm not sure I know how to get it.
Yeah, at this time, this doesn't. And, yeah, Rob, did you have something to add for that?
Well, I think that's right. I think the recidivism, like, if you're doing restorative practices, restorative justice well, right? You, as opposed to, you're going to learn from this consequence to not, to not do something again. You're going to learn from an experience where you restore and make folks whole, right? But to your extent, I mean, to your point, Laleh, that might be, let us, let us look at that. I think that's a, that you, I mean, theoretically, we have all the data points, you'd be able to do it, right? You know, you just have to write the right algorithms and then try to visualize it. And maybe both would be, would just give more depth, right? Like, you know, because some folks, it's just a one-time thing, right?
And then piggybacking on what Lalehia said is, is if kids, you know, quote-unquote, re-offend, that's not the word, but if they have discipline again and they go again to restorative justice. was it for the same sort of behavior or was it a completely different kind of behavior?
That's where it gets super complicated because you, you'd want to really dial it in on the same behavior, right? But maybe you might, I don't know. Because again, remember as I was talking to you all about the discipline codes, sometimes they're multiple coded. So it'd be hard to isolate that variable potentially. But but again, you know, let's think about it this way, right? If you get the data point where you're like, hmm, what's happening? Then you could always have the opportunity to dive down, right? Like, let's, 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 you know, six months from now, we're having this. We've come up with something that we're going to do. One of the numbers doesn't look right. It's not, hey, the numbers don't look right, we'll do better next time. It's, hey, the numbers don't look right. What do we do next? Do we need to better understand the problem? Do we need to, like, you know, where do we go? Like, these, these meetings, great data meetings leave, you leave with some action, right, to do it? So to the extent, what's the stratosphere we want these measures to look like? And then what, what's our move if something comes in in the ways we don't want? Or want?
And I, I think the reason to be looking at that recidivism number, for lack of a better term, is then we can know how much resource, that's the actionable item. How much resource are we putting into this? Because I think we, we've upped the resource, right, from zero, we upped it. But do we need to put more resource into it? And that's why I would be curious about seeing that question answered.
Or the fidelity of the model, right? And I think that would, I'd have as much interest in fidelity as resource to the extent. You know, what you'd want to prevent is people saying, oh, yeah, we did restorative justice, right? And they don't, right, so.
Two point, again, super excited to see all this. I think addition of indices to this would make it even more powerful. Two observations. One for me is, I think when we think about the subgroups that we're looking at, we should be responsive to what we know about the, the issue. And so when we deal with issues around mental health and sense of belonging, we know that our LGBTQ students are suffering from these problems at much higher rates and incidences than their straight classmates. And so this is where I'd want to see gender breakouts and LGBTQ breakouts in order to really get at the students who might be heavily impacted by them. And I realize there's some data that's not tracked that way, but like the survey and health data is tracked that way. And so we can do the breakouts if we include measures that are going from the ones that do. Anyway, so I, I think that would help us a lot. I would also say I would love to tie in the data, again, thinking about our long-term enrollment issues. I think one of the reasons, and I talk to parents who've just recently transferred to our private schools is they're dealing with a discipline thing that didn't go out and the kid didn't feel safe, they felt bullied. So I do think the, not just the recidivism behavior, but actually the exit from our school system should be something that's maybe not in the index, in the KPI, but maybe it's in the implementation data too, is to note, hey, did we lose that student a year later? Because I think that's happening.
I, I do think the way that we're thinking about that is, is having separate systems, right? Like that can inform one another, but, but, but separate systems. And then to, to some of the data, to your point, like I do think there's limitations on what we collect in regards to gender identity. I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Well, I mean, we, we, we wouldn't gather, if there's data at this point about LGBTQ, but we, but there, there is some data on gender, right? So there, there's a third or fourth category at this point in our system, sometimes with enough end to, to, to report on broad, district-wide, I mean, sorry, broad all-grade measures. But, but you, you're right, you're referencing data from the Healthy Kids Colorado's survey.
Before moving on, this kind of made me think a little bit about the scale discussion, right? And being careful about how we scale different things. Because we don't want to, we want to have the differentiation to look at things like, a teacher cares about me versus I feel bullied in my school or I feel like I don't belong. Because it really kept bringing different dimensions. And so I think having that variability to kind of capture those different pieces, I think, is really important. So it'd be nice to see that.
All right, thank you. So yeah, just to complete this piece out, so then for these particular metrics, we do have, again, the breakout by race and ethnicity categories, by programs, and then by level, so elementary, middle, high school.
So board members, we have 12 minutes left. Time flies when you're having fun. Let's talk for a moment around next steps for us. I think that we, we certainly captured feedback from the conversation. We moved pretty fast, so you all as board members might contemplate different things that you might want to ask about or speak to. You know, our hope is to get direction on what are the things, you know, what are the looks that you look like? I think we've got some really good feedback there. We've heard around, you know, you know, feedback around this well-being index weighting, nuancing, but also not losing the, you know, the, the raw data, right? So being able to kind of look at that. Alex has given some good feedback around our tiered supports. And then how do you think about capturing that data in a way that better tells you whether the intervention for the subgroup, how many kids it's helping and not versus an average or a median? So I think we have that feedback to go back. We've heard some of the questions around the usability of the grades. So I think what I would propose is, and we can do this a couple of ways. We could send out, you could send in your comments or thoughts. We could send out a survey again to get some direction, feedback. But then I'd want to follow it up with our one-on-one meetings to get context on what that is. And then I could take all that feedback back to the team. And so we begin to start building this out. That's, that's kind of what my, my best thoughts are right now, but would open it up for folks with discussion. Are you comfortable with that? With the understanding that, you know, we would do some work, we'd find a place to bring, we could bring it back at our next meeting to kind of say that based on the feedback, here's where we're looking. Does it feel right? Do we still need to adjust? Or we could try to bring that back to you previously for another feedback before our next meeting. We just leave that, Nicole, for, for the board to discuss.
Can I ask a question? A lot of the questions I have, so all of these metrics are based on the KPI. I have a lot of questions about implementation metrics and like, that's where my brain is going. And so I am curious to know, are we, something similar for some of those other parts that we talked about at the very beginning about leading measures and implementation metrics? Or are we keeping this really focused on KPI and then pulling out some of those other things at different points in time to dive a little bit deeper? But our dashboards are really focused on KPI. I'm, I just have some questions there.
Yeah, no, no, I think that we owe the board an implementation dashboard as well, right? Like so, and we owe that to our DAX and to our, to DAC and to SAC, right? So I think that, given the way, you know, the way we measure, right? What subgroups we measure, right, is an important piece. And then with implementation measures, as we're building out and finalizing UIP, then what we can do is begin to bring that back for you and quantify that. Now, I think there's a couple of opportunities. I have to check with the team to see how long, like these are long, like these are pretty, once they're built, they're good, but building them takes a ton of time in the midst of the beginning of school year. So I'll have to talk to Jonathan and team on what we think we'll have ready before we bring, can you pull up the calendar, the date, like the times we're bringing stuff back? Because what I, what we'll need to kind of think about is, do we need to have another, like allocate more time or does the time that we have allocated to talk about this and develop this, is that sufficient? Who's driving though?
This is.
Oh, okay. I thought Chris was David, I thought he was leaving. Like, because we're supposed to, no, 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 the count, the, yeah, go to the, go to the timeline. So we're supposed to bring back by September 10th, which is what, a month? Yeah, so, so maybe then it is that October 15th session we could dedicate to doing something similar with leading measures. And then any progress we've made on the other things? If you all are good with that, let's get it right. Let's spend the time, we have three hours. We are, we'll be much more on the same page than we were previously. And, and then we could do that on the 15th and that's what we would have that session for. I'm looking at the team, does that sound?
Absolutely, and one of the, the time-consuming last steps in working with the, the kind of dashboards that you've seen from Claire is making them public-ready.
Yeah, it might take some time for that.
And so, so what I'm, it would be awesome if by the 15th, we could have what you've seen, a variation on that public-ready and operational and some thinking on the leading measures. It might be an or, or some beginning thinking on leading measures. I, we just, this is a busy season for Claire and everybody else on the team because of UIPs.
Why don't we, why don't we put, why don't we put our heads together, put together a proposal for the board? And then, you know, as long as I think that we're working and getting this right, I mean, I think that that's the big work right now.
Thanks, Alex, and then other board members weighing in.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to leave us with, with two thoughts. One is how grateful I am to the staff and Jonathan's team. Because this is a tremendous amount of work and really well-done and a great discussion by the board. So I'm really, hats off to the staff for what you've done, this is great. The question I have, not enough time to talk about it today, but I do think we need to get to it in subsequent discussion, is what, what's publicly available at the school level? And so as a parent, people have a lot of interest in how the district is doing, but they really want to know how their school is doing on these things. And I know that that is, like, that level of granularity is available to the people in the school to do their, do their work. And we want to build a culture of that. But I, I would like this to move in the direction that it's okay for the parents to also have that school-level data. And I know there's reluctance around that. You've, you've talked about the implications of letting people see stuff that can affect enrollment patterns. But I'm much more interested in empowering parents to understand how their school is doing than I, and then letting that lead to improvement that keeps the parents rather than the other way around. So I think we as a board should talk about what is available to the public facing at school-level granularity.
No, and I agree. And I think that that's, that's great for the 15th. You know, with our last strategic plan metrics, they were all available at the school level. So now prior to that, that wasn't something that had been a practice, right? And so we, and so, so we have a, a history of doing that. Yeah, just as long as we're thoughtful, you know, certainly want to be transparent. You know, you want to give folks the right context with data so the conclusions that they're making, right? Based on the data that they give access to are right and they understand. And I think that, that we can get there. So yeah, no, that's good feedback.
And as I say, I know the SACs, at the SAC level are getting access to some of this data and having those conversations in their schools as well. So moving in the right direction there. Appreciate you highlighting that. Board members, other thoughts coming back to next steps, how this process went? Last thoughts as we work, as staff work to prepare for the next meeting or our subsequent meetings on this topic? Beth?
I just want to jump on the bandwagon that Alex started and just to tell you thank you so much. This has been really helpful, it's incredible work. I know it is a heavy lift and I am really looking forward to our next steps. I think this is, I for one feel like this went great. I completely appreciate the opportunity to do this during the daytime, to really dig in and have these maybe a little more informal conversations with the depth that I think this board has really craved. So I'm feeling really good about the work we did today. So thank you to everyone.
I thought the hand was raised, it was a thumb up, like I can't quite see.
I'll echo that I think this is amazing work and staff's done wonderful. And that I think we have to continue to explore data for improvement and data for public consumption. That is an exploration that I will continue to advocate for on this board. I think it's super important work and I think we, it's trust-building work that we have to do.
I'd also just love, like to give Nicole kudos for a well-run meeting. I think keeping us on our agenda and the level of exchange we're able to have in this setting was really constructive and efficient, so I really appreciate that.
I just lost my train of thought. Thank you for that. Staff did, took the lead here, I remember. One thing that I've been thinking a lot about, knowing that we're on this path and that different boards with different levels of desire and comfort have taken different paths with data. If there is, for our board members or folks that are watching these meetings that need some training up, I really want everybody to feel like they can access the information we have. And if we need to take that time to train up to make sure the information that's presented is accessible or if some things feel more or less accessible depending on comfort level and experience looking at data, that's really important for us to know. I wouldn't want anybody to ever be left out of conversations, particularly as we get more technical. So how can we help each other? How can we help our public that's looking at that, at our data as we become, as some of this does become more publicly facing? It's just something I want to elevate in that there is no, no reason to feel like you can't say, I need help understanding this. Like, we need to understand the data so we can ask the right questions, so we know that the work is headed in the right direction. The worst thing we, I would, the worst thing that could happen, in my opinion, is somebody's not knowing how to understand the information that's presented in their making, conclusions that are not, not accurate. So the more that we can help each other, the more that we can help the public understand this data, the better. And so if there's anything that we can do differently moving forward, please always let Rob know.
I just want to thank our team. I think, board members, what you, what you hopefully have seen today is, is the talent that we have on our team, the focus, the alignment with board direction and staff and staff work. And so really proud of the team, everybody here that participated. And like Claire said, this is, there was a lot of folks not sitting around this table that had a lot of insight into this. I do think that there's great opportunities for improvement. I was sharing with some board members during the break that the, the vision that I shared with, with our team is I want us to have the most comprehensive, transparent, and meaningful data dashboards in the state of Colorado, and I think we're well on our way. So kudos to the team. Thank you, board, for your engagement. Beth, you were the best timekeeper. And because it's noon and we're lea, and we're right on time. So great job, Beth, thanks, everybody. Great job, Nicole, great job, everyone, for your engagement.
Thanks, everybody, for that thoughtful presentation and engagement. With that, that concludes our business for today and this meeting is adjourned.